Seeing at 6:00 PM, I'd like to call the December 15, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Kenai State Council to order and ask if you are able to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Welcome, everybody.
Clerk, please call it all.
Mayor Gabriel.
Here.
Councilmember Winger.
Present.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning.
Here.
Councilmember Basden.
Here.
Councilmember Petty.
Here.
Councilmember Sonart.
Here.
Councilmember Naxet.
Here.
Mayor Gabriel, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we get to Agenda Approval, I would like to just take a moment and recognize that this meeting is Ms. Hines' last meeting. She will be leaving us, unfortunately. And I just wanted to just, I'm sure there'll be more discussion on this a little bit later, but we did get a little something to start the meeting off with, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
I didn't feel it was right to have those sitting back here behind me the whole meeting and probably wilting. Any flower that gets around me usually just sort of doesn't do very well, so. With that, Council, move to Agenda Approval. And before we do that, I'd like to call your attention to a laydown that you should have in front of you with requested additions to the packet. Action: Add to Item D2, Ordinance Number 3257-2021, Written Comment, Requested by the City Clerk. Action: Add to Item D4, Ordinance Number 3259-2021, Amendment Memo, Requested by the City Manager. Action: Add to Item G10, City Participation in UC Lawsuit, Homer Resolution, Requested by Legal. And Action: Will Add Item G11, which is a Discussion Item, FY 2023 Budget Goals, Work Session Request Memo, Requested by the City Manager. Pleasure, Council. Councilmember Naxet.
Thank you. Mayor Gabriel, I move to approve the agenda with the four add items. The list read into the record. Request unanimous consent.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. Next, we'll move to the consent agenda. Councilmember Naxet.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to approve the consent agenda and request unanimous consent.
I'll second that.
Is there anybody from the body that would like to amend the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please read that into the record.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Tonight, on your consent agenda, you have approval of the regular meeting of minutes of December 1, 2021, put forth by the City Clerk. Approval of bills to be ratified, brought forth by Administration. Introduction of Ordinance 3261-2021, Accepting and Appropriating a Grant from the Institute of Museum and Library Services through the Department of Education and Early Development, Division of Library, Archives, and Museums for the Purchase of a Hold Locker, brought forth by Administration, with a public hearing on January 5. Introduction of Ordinance Number 3262-2021, Accepting and Appropriating a Grant from the Institute of Museum and Library Services passed through the Department of Education and Early Development, Division of Library, Archives, and Museums for the Purchase of a Steam Kit Shelving, Library Materials, and Other Items brought forth by Administration with a public hearing on January 5. Introduction of Ordinance Number 3262-2021, Accepting and Appropriating a Grant from the Institute of Museum and Library Services passed through the Department of Education and Early Development, Division of Library, Archives, and Museums for the Purchase of a Steam Kit Shelving, Library Materials, and Other Items brought forth by Administration with a public hearing on January 5. Introduction of Ordinance Number 3263-2021, Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations in the General Fund Police Department and Accepting Grants from the United States Department of Justice and Alaska Municipal League Joint Insurance Association, AMLGIA, for the Purchase of Ballistic Vests brought forth by Administration with a public hearing on January 5. Introduction of Ordinance 3264-2021, Accepting and Appropriating Asset Forfeiture Funds Provided to the City of Kenai through the State of Alaska Department of Public Safety, brought forth by Administration with a public hearing on January 5. Introduction of Ordinance Number 3265-2021, Increasing Estimated Revenue and Appropriations in the General Fund and the Parks Improvement Capital Project Fund for Additional Kenai Dog Park Funding, brought forth by Mayor, Vice Mayor Glenn Denning and Councilmembers Winger and Basden, with a public hearing on January 5. And that's your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to any item that is on the consent agenda, which was just read into the record?
Anybody on Zoom can unmute yourself or use the raise hand feature.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to Council. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Tonight, we have no scheduled public comment. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to the Council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Ms. Frey, please come forward. Your name and address for the record.
I am Carol Fries. I live at 609 Maple Drive in Kenai. I wanted to say that being a municipal clerk involves a great deal of knowledge of some things and some knowledge of a lot of things. Thank you, Jamie, for serving the city of Kenai with your knowledge of a lot of things, your energy, your humor, your expertise, long hours, dedication, and all while raising a family. And I wanted to also say you have been and are still appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, Ms. Frey, could you give us maybe a little bit of your background? I know you sort of hinted at what a clerk needs to know. I'm guessing you have some personal knowledge in that regard.
I have 21 years of knowledge of all of that, and Jamie has even more with all the technology that's available at this point and that you've had to dive into in the last year, and you've done it very smoothly. And that takes a lot from a lot of people here, but Jamie's got a lot of handling of it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to address the Council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda?
Anybody on Zoom can use the raise hand feature or unmute yourself.
See, someone's got their hand up there. Oh, Ms. Bryson.
Yes.
Here's the floor.
This is Eileen Bryson. I live on 1205 Third Avenue, Kenai, Alaska, and I'm Zooming from Portland where my grandchildren live. And I'm not sure I'm at the right spot. I want to talk about the library. And is that going to be coming up later on with public input at that point in time? Is that correct?
Yes, Ms. Bryson. That's on our regular agenda under public hearings.
Okay. So I will just wait for that. Thank you.
That would be the second ordinance we consider here under public hearings.
Okay. Thank you. I'll wait till then. Thanks.
Okay. I'll be sure to call on you. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to address the Council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Oh, Ms. Smalley.
Susan Smalley, 105 Linwood Lane. I just wanted to celebrate also the time Jamie has spent with us, and I think it's really important that we acknowledge that because later on down the line and during the election season, there's been a lot of flak directed at election officials and at the election process. I worked on elections in the city of Kenai for 45 years. I did it the first time because it was a way to have my kids at daycare. I was a stay-at-home mom, and I would be with adults all day. I confess that that was how I began. But I have done poll watching for 16 hours a day. I have done elections for about 45 years. The redundancy is incredible. I mean, if you think watching paint dry is boring, the redundancy in elections is incredibly one thing, another thing, and then check and recheck and recheck and recheck. And I'm just saying it here because we have heard a lot of stuff about how our elections are suspicious, not run well. In our borough, and in fact, our borough clerk, has received accolades time after time after time because our borough does elections well, and our cities do elections well. So I hope you keep in mind when that comes up again that you can remind people and ask people also how many elections they've worked, how many times they poll watched, and how many times they've been on the Kansas Board. Because if the answer is zero, then what they're saying, in my opinion, is not very valid. So for all the clerks who work incredible hours and come when we call them because something's not working or we need extra anything, Jamie has been awesome and all the ones before too. So thank you so much, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smalley. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to address the Council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Ms. Orth.
Anyway, Ms. Orth, and I live in Kenai, Alaska, and I just want to address the Council in that there's no criticism of the people who work on the election board. There's no criticism of people who work long, tireless hours for elections. There's only praise for that. On my part, there's only, there is criticism and questions about the ordinance that has been rewritten because it is sloppy. It is huge. It is not discernible, and it needs to be rewritten. So I just wanted to put that on the record, and I wanted to state that again. There is a huge concern. It opens the doors to even more election fraud, and I want it addressed. And I would love to see us go to only ballots because that's the only way to really truly secure our elections. We are getting bigger, and there is going to be a lot of questions about how our elections are run, and I thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to address the Council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearings. First stop, Item D1, Ordinance Number 3256-2021, Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations in the Airport Improvements Capital Project Funds, Authorizing the Acceptance of a Grant from the Federal Aviation Administration for the Kenai Municipal Airport Sand Storage Facility Construction Phase II, and Authorizing a Budget Transfer in the Airport Improvements Capital Project Fund, Kenai Municipal Airport Sand Storage Facility Project to Facilitate the Return of Funds Advanced from the Airport Special Revenue Fund. Pleasure, Council. Councilmember Naxet.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to enact Ordinance 3256-2021.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Ordinance Number 3256-2021?
Anybody on Zoom can unmute yourself or use the raise hand feature.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to Council. Comments, deliberation from Council? Vice Mayor Glenn Denning.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. This topic has been in the newspaper, and more or less accurately, I was just perhaps asking if our city manager could give just a 30,000-foot view of what this is about, and then that will help my phone from not ringing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Oster, can you provide a summary of what this ordinance does?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Glenn Denning, I could, but I'd prefer that Mr. Curtin, who is project manager on this, gives the, gives a 30,000-foot report.
Thank you, Mr. Curtin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor. So really, what we're doing here is largely financial housekeeping. The FAA, at the FAA's request, this project was split into two phases for available funding at the time. So this second piece right now is basically just appropriating those funds as the second part of this grant. This was expected. We knew that it was going to be done this way when the project started, so no real changes or surprises in that process. So, yeah, it's just really acquiring the funds that were originally discussed with the FAA and getting them into their appropriate account for me to continue on with the project. The project itself, as you know, is, it's currently, we've had some groundwork done out there, but the actual building itself has not started. That will not be taking place until springtime, and the building itself will go up over the summer months. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Ordinance Number 3256-2021? Seeing none, clerk, please call it all. Thank you for that, Mr. Curtin.
Mayor Gabriel.
Yes.
Councilmember Winger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning.
Yes.
Councilmember Basden.
Yes.
Councilmember Petty.
Yes.
Councilmember Sonart.
Yes.
Councilmember Naxet.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Council, on Item D2, Ordinance Number 3257-2021, Accepting and Appropriating a Collection Equity Award from the Network of National Library of Medicine Region 5 for the Purchase of Health and Wellness Titles for the Kenai Community Library Collection. Councilmember Naxet.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to enact Ordinance 3257-2021.
I'll second that.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Ordinance Number 3257-2021? I know Ms. Bryson has indicated she would like to, so I'd like to go to her first.
Once again, I live at 1205 Third Avenue, Kenai, Alaska. I have been a lover of the library since I was a small child. I used to ride my bicycle to get library books, put them in my basket, and ride home every day. My mother became a children's librarian. When I moved to Kenai, I became the unofficial, the volunteer story lady at the Kenai Library for 12 years. And after that, I became a member of the Library Commission, and when it went into balance, I became a member of the Friends of the Kenai Community Library. So you can tell I love libraries, and I am hoping that you think about the role of the library. We have a wonderful director, Ikata Wolf, and she has been trained, and she knows how to select books, and I'm very pleased with her. She's been at our meetings when we've had the Friends of the Library meeting. She does a wonderful job, and it's her responsibility to make decisions about books that we have. I know you have the responsibility of accepting grants or not, but I do hope that you support her in what she is doing, especially with this particular grant that's coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Ms. Bryson? Councilmember Naxet.
I want to thank Mrs. Bryson for your testimony, and when you were an elementary school teacher, I read books in your classroom many a time, and I appreciated that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Winger.
Thank you. I just would like to say thank you for taking your time to call in on your vacation, taking time from your family to give your input. We appreciate that, and have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments for Ms. Bryson? Seeing none. We'll ask if there's anybody else that would like to speak to or testify to Ordinance Number 3257-2021. Ms. Nelson.
Marian Nelson, 44629 Tower Hill Street, Kenai, is the address. I'm not speaking so much for myself at all, although I certainly support the library's decisions and choices here, but just to note that the letters or messages that were sent to you all, from Tamra Ware, from Chris Schmidt, from Mayor Joe Joyner, former librarian, and the last one we have in the new packet is from Megan Zipelman. And all of it, very, very worthwhile thoughts to share with all of us and remind us how valuable our library is and to support it. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Nelson? Thanks, Marian. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to speak to Ordinance Number 3257-2021? You please come forward. Just give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Amy Morrell-Honnold. I currently residing at 303 North Forest Drive in Kenai. I'm here regarding the ordinance concerning the library collection. I've already made some of my thoughts available to the Council about the constitutionality of their actions, but due to lack of response, I found it necessary to come here in person to elaborate on further thoughts. In any organization, a duplication of effort is a waste of time and money. The city already pays a qualified person to direct the library's collection, usurping her job as wasting the city's and, by effect, my money. As a former library employee, I know that many grants and donations require a qualified person to direct the library. By usurping the job of the director, there's real potential for losing those precious funds. You could be costing the city thousands of dollars. I know every person on the council was elected representing themselves as being fiscally conservative. Costing the city money is not my idea of conservative. It makes me concerned about whose job will be usurped next. Will the police department be receiving orders on who they may or may not arrest? Will the parks in Rex area, will they be told who can use a public park? I'm concerned. I propose the council accept the funds offered to the library and move on. And finally, I say, as I said in my packet that was sent, you don't choose what I can or cannot read. I choose. That's my constitutional right. Thank you for your time.
Would you mind taking questions or?
No, but I am hard of hearing, so if you can make sure to please.
Oh, okay. What was your name again? I'm sorry.
Amy Morrell-Honnold.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Orth? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the general public that would like to please come forward? Ms. Christian, I guess, or Ms. Orth, and then Ms. Christian, next.
I'm April Orth, and I live in Kenai, and I'm just here to set the record straight. I was here in the meeting that the grant was questioned, and it was not questioned because they wanted to censor books. The grant was questioned because we were just asking the city council to source the funding, to source the funding, the grant, where the grant was coming from, to see if there were any strings attached to that, to see whether or not those, if there were strings, if we wanted to live as a community with those strings. It was not about picking and choosing books. It was not about censoring the books. It was just asking our city council to do its due diligence and source where the funding is coming from and if there was any strings attached to that funding. And I think that that should be understood for the record. At least in my eyes, that's what I saw that evening. And so I wanted to reiterate that because my daughter, I used to take her to the library. She loved it. She would walk into the library, and she was in heaven because that was her happy place. And for a lot of us, it is our happy place. And the book, whoever's choosing to get the books should be able to choose. What I'm asking our city council to do with every bit of funding that we get is source where the funding is coming from and if there are strings attached, and if we want to live with those strings. And I think that that's only a responsible thing to do, and I really appreciate that. I feel like that's being done right now.
Any questions for Ms. Orth? Seeing none, thank you. Ms. Christian, you're up next.
My name is Barb Christian. I reside at 410 Rogers Road in Kenai, and I serve as the treasurer for the Friends of the Library. And as a result of that, I have seen the, well, not exactly a flood, but many donations, many more donations than we usually receive in the time period have come in since this issue arose, and all of them have been accompanied by comments that they want the library to be a source of a variety of information. And that brings me to the reason I'm here tonight. I've written, and you've all seen what I've written. I don't want to reiterate any of that, but I kind of think that this whole discussion maybe could have been avoided if we had referred first to the City Library Code, which specifically covers questions like this, and particularly Section B, which says the selection of books and/or other library material shall be made on the basis of their value of interest, information, and enlightenment of all the people of the community, which is what the equity term in that title meant, and being equal with the rest of the nation. No book and/or library material shall be excluded because of the race, nationality, political, or social views of the author. And there are several other items on the code, as I'm sure that you know, but it specifically states that the city buys into the library bill of rights. And so I think we've all been surrounding a moot point. The city code says that we can't ask for a list of books and pass on whether they're acceptable or not. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on Ms. Christian? Seeing none, thank you. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to address the Council regarding Ordinance 3257-2021 at this time? Ms. Schmidt.
Christine Schmidt, 513 Ash Avenue, Kenai. I have an email in your laydown packet where I ask you to, I have to ask you to support this ordinance, and thank you to the sponsors for bringing it back from last fall. I also want to say that I appreciate the efforts of all city staff, not just the library, to obtain grant funds to pay for city services, including this grant, so that's all I have to say. And also bon voyage, and thank you to Jamie Hines. She's been a really great city clerk, as have all the city clerks in the 40 years I've lived here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on Ms. Schmidt? Thank you. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to address the Council at this time on Ordinance 3257-2021?
Christine Hutchinson.
Ms. Hutchinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council, for taking my question. I'm a little bit confused. The ordinance says award, and I'm not sure if that means a grant from the library from before, as was discussed before, or an award from the Friends of the Library. Friends of the Library fundraiser. Because I understood after the last meeting where the grant was discussed, there was a considerable amount of money raised that went to Friends of the Library as a result of this question. So I was just a little confused as to what the award meant, if it was an award from the State Department or an award from Friends of the Library that was being accepted for this. Because if a considerable amount of money was raised, I'm not sure why a grant from the state, Health and Social Services or wherever it was coming from, is still needed. That's my only concern. I would prefer that the $1,500 grant be, by, you know, passed on that $1,500 grant now that other money has been raised. That was all I had. Thank you.
Very good. And just for clarification, yes, this is the grant that was postponed, I believe it was our first meeting in October. And since that was postponed, we had new council members that were seated. Whenever we have a new election, any business falls off the agenda, so this one has to be reintroduced. So to clarify, this is the same grant award that was considered and postponed in October. Is there anybody else from the general?
Well, I'm kind of confused.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm kind of confused why we need the money from the grant when we have all this money from, that was raised and went to Friends of the Library. That's all. And I just thought that they, one could substitute for the other and we could skip the grant. That's all.
Yeah, okay.
But I, that's.
Yeah, very good, Ms. Hutchinson. I didn't mean to belabor a point. I just wanted to provide clarification. It seemed that there might be a little bit of fog there, but point, your point is taken.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance 3257-2021?
Anyone else on Zoom can unmute yourself or use the raise hand feature.
Oh, Mary Jo. Mary Jo Joyner.
Hello. Can you hear me?
I see your hand. Yes, go, go ahead, Ms. Joyner. You have the floor.
Well, you have my letter in the, you have my letter in the pack. And as a former director, like I said, I'm sort of disappointed that this has become such an issue, and I urge you to just accept this grant and move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Joyner? Thank you. Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3257-2021?
Say just one more thing. Maybe there's a statement of clarification for what the Friends can spend money on and what this grant does, because they're certainly two different things. That's it. Marian Nelson.
Ms. Orth, would you prefer to defer to Ms. Wolf, who's our library director, who's in attendance here?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I can answer that question. So that it is specific that this grant is for health and wellness titles. The money that went to the Friends could be used for any other purpose that the Friends determines is appropriate through discussions with Ms. Wolf. So this is specific as far as what it can purchase. That money that was raised from the community could be used for any other purpose to benefit the library.
Any further testimony on ordinance number 3257-2021?
Anybody else on Zoom can use the raise hand feature or unmute yourself?
Seeing none, we'll bring you back to council. Councilmember next then.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. It seems like we'll be repetitious a little bit from the public comments we've had, but ordinance 3257-2021 is a, is a grant for $1,500 for wealth and health and wellness materials. I've included in the packet the web page for that grant, and it's silent on exactly, you know, any titles or anything like that that's there. It's clear what it's, what it's for. And it does say it provides equitable health information to libraries. And libraries, in my estimation, are probably the biggest equalizers we have in a community where you go in there, it doesn't matter where you are on the financial scale, you can go in and get a book that you may not be able to afford otherwise, and it's there. And that's what it's there for. These, these health and wellness material books and materials, according to the information I've got, are obsolete after about five years. Some say three. Information in the, in the world is, data is doubling every, every, every 13 months, you know? So it probably becomes obsolete even sooner than that. The topics that, that will be, will be included are included in the librarian's memo, and the topics will include health, self-care and mental health, health habits, dealing with living and chronic stress and chronic diseases, caregiver support, suicide prevention, traditional knowledge, contemporary and non-Western medicine like acupuncture and herbal remedies, reference books on medical, or Medicaid and Medicare literary, health literacy, such as how to find and use health information and make informed healthcare decisions, items on specific conditions like breast cancer, dementia, and women's health and men's health, items like that. And I'd like to point out too, you know, the, the books and the material that come into the library is vested in the librarian per our city code. And, and we're not going to be receiving through this grant a pre-made box from the grant person. It comes from our librarian who will make that decision. They're not going to send something and we don't know what it is and we have to put it on our shelves. It just doesn't work that way. And I also kind of want to point out, and most folks that use the library know, that the library is not limited by the walls that, you know, contain it, and that I can go in there and if there's not a topic or a particular book that I want, I can ask the librarian to see if any of the other libraries in the consortium have it. So basically, our library is in Fairbanks, it's in Soldadne, Anchorage, Juneau, and I can get any one of those books and topics and bring them on in and borrow it for a while, like you do from any library, and then, and then send it off. And so at any rate, I encourage that we just kind of move on and accept this grant and let Katya do her job, which she does very well. Thank you.
Any further discussion on ordinance number 3257-2021? Councilmember Sonar.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Last month, my main concerns of approving this grant were as follows. I'm going to list them. Number one, if approved, would our librarian be obligated to choose materials from a specified government list? Number two, if approved, would this indicate that our library has not adequately met the needs of a certain group of people? Number three, if approved, would there be obligating strings back to the entity that awarded the grant? So in researching out this issue, I was able to answer most of my questions. So here we go. Number one, no, the librarian would not be obligated to choose from a list. Point two, the use of the word equity. This can actually be looked at from a different perspective. Is it equitable to our entire community at large to have a shelf of outdated medical references? Outdated materials serve nobody. And therefore, in that sense, it would not be equitable to any of us. Point three, would there be strings? And from what I have read from their website, the application, and the Facebook page, there does not seem to be any obligation or strings at this point. If, and that's a big if, unforeseen strings were to surface, we would deal with them in kind as necessary. During my first week of residency here in Kenai, I, back in 94, I am proud to say that I got my Kenai library card first, even before securing an Alaska driver's license. A vibrant community library is a priority of mine as a citizen. And over the years, we have been blessed with professional and very skilled librarians. Our current director, Ms. Wolf, most certainly included in that group. Ms. Wolf has already told us in her memo what she will be purchasing, and that is to update our medical information resources and replace the current older inventory. And councilmember Naxted gave a very detailed description of exactly which health references would be done. I have no reason to question her professionalism or her sincerity. So yes, I will be supporting the approval of this grant and would just simply like to move on.
Any further, councilmember Bason?
Thank you, Mayor. I also was new to the council sitting audience whenever this first came up, and I'll be supporting this, but I just wanted to make note that I have given to the GoFundMe page. I want to make sure that I make that out to the public as well as my family's names on the, on the fireplace over there. So my, my wife and children have enjoyed the library. I think this got more political than it should have. Could be a learning experience for everybody, but also, it's our job to ask questions of the, of the city manager and the staff, whether it's the librarian, whether it's the fire chief, whether it's the police chief. They need to answer this group's questions so we can, we can, we can pass these ordinances. And the process worked in this instance. I'm pretty sure that you're going to see that. Thank you.
Councilmember Winger.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I'd like to just reiterate what I've heard from my colleagues. I too have spent a lot of time on this issue. Specifically, the concern for me was the source of the funding and any strings that were attached to it. We spent countless hours looking into this process, the application, and going forth with all the information that we were provided. I feel comfortable in accepting this and I will be supporting this. Again, this wasn't to censor books. It was never about what books we could or couldn't purchase. It was simply for me, the source of the funding and the strings. And they met all, were able to answer all of our questions when it came to that and concern, and I'll be supporting this.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. My goal in, in having this discussion is that my interest was having library 101, just to understand the process. You know, something comes in, something's accepted. How does it work? You know, and I think we've been very well informed by this process. Sometimes the rhetoric got a little spun up, but that's, that's okay. We're humans and we do this, and that's why we have a public forum, and that's why the mayor has a gavel. So I'm, I, my, my, my concerns are well addressed, and as I stated before, I have college credits in library science, and you're, we're right to, to have material that serves the interests of the community. And equity, to me, in this instance, means equity of opportunity. And again, my, my expectation is met, and I will be voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Petty.
Yes, it was a privilege to co-sponsor this ordinance, and I wanted to thank publicly Ms. Wolf for bringing this grant into our community so as to provide greater resources for all of the individuals that live here and also not having greater resources without having to raise our taxes. And thank you for your expertise and look forward to other grants that you bring forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yeah, I'd just like to thank you for your patience, Ms. Wolf, as we've sort of worked through this process. And I certainly hope, and I don't think there was any sort of intention from the body here to have any question about your ability to do your job and how well you do it. And, you know, I think sometimes we get hung up on some words, in this case, probably the word equity in there, because in my mind, you know, it's like other people, my question, does that word equity mean that, that there's, they're implied that we've been inequitable in the past? And that needs to be a reconciliation? Or since it's a grant, if somebody applies for this grant and doesn't get it, is that equitable? I mean, so it's confused. But that aside, I think we've sort of gone through the gauntlet where everybody understands, you know, where we're at with this. And just, and I'm going to say something I hope is humorous, and I, considering how this turned out, maybe we should postpone every grant award for two weeks for the benefit of the library. So maybe make sure you give yourself plenty of time. And I'm saying that in jest. Seeing other discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
Yes.
Councilmember Baysden?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Council, we're now on item D3, ordinance number 3258-2021, accepting and appropriating funding from the state of Alaska Department of Health and Social Services, Division of Public Health for the Health and Equitable Communities Program, and authorizing the city manager, city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement for this funding. Pleasure, council. Councilmember next then.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to an act ordinance, 3258-2021.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3258-2021?
Anybody on Zoom can unmute yourself or use the raise hand feature.
Seeing none, we'll bring you back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Winger.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I have a question for administration. It was our understanding when we had these two projects put in front of us that the one, that project that was picked would need approval from the landowner. Was that obtained?
Ms. Orth.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Winger. So to construct the project as it's, as it's designed right now, would not require approval from the landowner. However, without approval from the landowner for an extension of the trail itself, we essentially have a bridge to nowhere. So that still does need to be pursued. But construction of the, of the bridge itself doesn't need approval of the landowner, but as you get to the east side of that creek, eventually the trail's going to head north towards the highway, and we'll need to procure an easement there. Administrative plan on pursuing that easement and getting the easement procured before any construction begins.
Thank you. That was my concern, so thank you.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning.
Yeah, so just to square the circle, then this is a placeholder ordinance for the funds, correct?
Ms. Orth.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Glenn Denning. This will establish a capital project fund for this project. However, we're fully aware that ultimately, an easement needs to be procured before this construction would begin. Design for this project would probably happen sometime, I mean, we've got a significant backlog of capital projects, as you know. Design of this project probably wouldn't start for quite some time still. We're not talking about construction next summer, so we've got time to procure that easement. This does establish the fund for that, but again, administration is aware that we need to procure that easement before we begin the process of expending this money.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bason.
Thank you, Mayor. City manager, is typical in a capital project, you have five years. Is that, is that what the city has?
Ms. Orth.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Baysden. So our capital projects don't have, they don't lapse. So the project carries over year to year. Typically, what we'll do is if a project is not conducted over a certain period of time, we continually look back at those projects and we reappropriate those funds or move those funds back into the general fund, but there's no deadline that's imposed by the city.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
Yes.
Councilmember Baysden?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, council. We're on item D4, ordinance number 3259-2021, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general and municipal roadway, improvement capital project funds, and increasing a purchase order to foster construction for the 2021 Bryson Avenue Bluff Erosion Prepare Project. Pleasure, council. Councilmember next then.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to an act ordinance, 3259-2021.
I'll second that.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3259-2021?
Anybody on Zoom can unmute yourself or use the raise hand feature.
Seeing none, I'll bring, we'll bring you back to council, but I will note that there's a suggested amendment to this that was in our laydown this evening. Councilmember next then.
Yeah, it's, it's a necessary amendment. But yeah, and it's in our, it's in our, in our laydown on page 11 of 15 on the bottom there. And so what I'm going to do is go ahead and make of 15 on the bottom there. And so what I'm going to do is go ahead and make the entire motion, since it's all connected. I amend the fourth whereas by adding, as well as one additional section of stormwater piping totaling 35 feet after the word used. I amend the fifth whereas by adding, and the additional section of piping installed totals $16,065 for a total proposed change order one cost of $69,397.50 after $53,332.50. And replace $53,332.50 in section one with $69,397,050. Replace $363,107.50 where it appears in section one with $379,172.50. And replace $8,332.50 where it appears in the fifth whereas in section two with $24,397.50.
I'll second that.
I would second the motion asked for unanimous for the amendment.
Unannounced consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the amendment is approved. So we now have ordinance number 3259-2021 as amended before us. Further discussion? Vice Mayor Glenn Denning.
Yeah, just for review, if we could have a 32,000 view explanation, please.
Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Glenn Denning. Again, I'll defer to Mr. Curtin.
Mr. Curtin.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. City manager, Ostrander. Vice Mayor Glenn Denning, thank you for the question. I apologize for this. This is on me. I generally take quite a bit of pride in my legislation, and my due diligence on this one kind of got past me. So the contractor fosters construction on this one, when they put together their pay requests, they included all of this piping in as original contract piping, and 35 feet of it were actually not included. So when I was prepping the change order, my numbers were not balancing, and it took me some time to figure it out, and I had to go back to the original bid documents and realize that we had a 35, I was missing 35 feet of piping. That's why my numbers weren't working out. So I'm glad we caught it, and we don't have to go through this again to prep that. But as you know, this was an ongoing, a very active project. So during bid phase, you know, the 30 days that we were out for bid and getting contract documents prepped and signed, the erosion that was happening out there was continuing to take place, really with every rain event, you know, that we were experiencing. So I knew that that was going to be an issue, which is why we included such a large contingent sum at the 45,000. I just underestimated what the overall impact of it was going to be. We actually shot the site with LiDAR. We actually had a drone fly and shoot the grades before the start of work and at the end of work. So we actually have a very detailed, and I believe I included it in the original ordinance that showed the overlay of the maps. So we have a very definitive, you know, quantity of materials that were placed there. So I'm very confident with the amounts. The projects, I'm very relieved the project's done. It's a very good thing to have this restored, and we are very pleased with how the work turned out. I just, I apologize. I should have caught that, and I didn't. So I do apologize for the need for the amendment. The only thing left to do on the project, we ran out of time with getting grass to grow with the temperatures cooling, so they'll return in the spring, and we'll topsoil the site and hydroseed it, and then we'll be good to go thereafter. But the adjacent property owners were fantastic to work with. Contractor was great. Engineer was great. I'm very pleased. It was a very successful project for the city.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning.
Yes, thank you for your summary, and I'm impressed with the effort on this and the magnitude of the job. The photos really are impressive, and what I like is the cool little drawings from McLean. It helps explain the gradient and the amount of soils that have to be managed. Thank you.
Further discussion? Councilmember Naxte.
Yeah, I want to say that I'm glad that this job is done also, for the obvious reason when you look at the photos there. But it was really a dynamic project. As you said, it was continuing with erosion, and the magnitude, it's kind of also a specialty type of project too. So getting a change order like this doesn't surprise me one bit, and it's what you got to do to finish the job and do it right. So thank you.
Any further discussion?
I do have just a couple of questions. Mr. Curtin, how much material, do you recall how much material was required backfill? I don't need the exact number, just sort of a rough idea.
It was, so the original. Apologies. Yeah, so I want to say our original bid on bid day, we had about 8,700 yards, and I think we ended up a little over 10,000 yards of material that were brought in on that. And yeah, so it was extensive. We had trucks running constantly for days in and out of there to build that site up. So I would also add, you know, I don't typically, and I appreciate your comments on the change orders. I really truly appreciate the support. I don't normally like showing up at the end with, you know, these expansive changes, but we really didn't have a choice in this matter. If I was going to reduce the slope at that site, it would actually be taking away property from the adjacent property owners, which really, it wasn't a viable option. So we really kind of had to stick with the design that was proposed. So it was kind of, you know, we truly did have to do what we set out to do. Didn't have much choice in the matter, so.
Okay, and I just got one last question. So I appreciate the photos. It looks like it was well done, but the energy dissipator at the bottom, at the toe of the bluff, it looks like part of that might be below the high tide mark. Do you anticipate, you know, periodic maintenance down there to keep that? I know that can be pretty dynamic.
Yes, we will continue to monitor that. So we did add those. The pipe that's coming out of there is a 30-inch diameter pipe, and it's picking up a tremendous amount of stormwater all the way down Reedout, picking up wild wood, tremendous amount of water pressure that's coming out of that pipe during a high rain event. So yes, we did put that there to minimize that impact. As it, you know, I was concerned, somebody out there in the, literally, it's a massive pipe with, so we wanted to slow that down as it hit there. That drone footage was actually shot several days after a storm event, so a lot of the material and stuff there was slightly washed out after a storm event. So it is a constantly changing environment, and we will have to monitor it. So they are pretty heavy, though. I mean, these are the large concrete, you know, several thousand pound parking barricades. But it is, you know, the storm surges, it's amazing the power that they have when they come into that beach.
Thank you, Mr. Curtin. Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. And ordinance number 3259-2021 is amended.
Councilmember Baysden.
Yes.
Councilmember Petty.
Yes.
Councilmember Sonart.
Yes.
Councilmember Naxte.
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel.
Yes.
Councilmember Winger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Counsel, we're on ordinance number 3260-2021, amending Kenai Municipal Code's 13.40.010. Definitions to maintain current regulations on off-road vehicle use in Kenai after July 1, 2021. Pleasure, counsel. Councilmember Naxte.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to an act ordinance 326D-2021.
I'll second that.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3260-2021? Mr. Dothett.
Hi, Alex Dothett, 1104 Leeward Drive, Kenai, Alaska. I just wanted to take a minute. On this, it's pertaining to the new state regulation that's coming out, that they're going to allow motorized vehicles. They're changing 13 AAC to allow motorized vehicles essentially on all roads, ATVs is what I'm talking about, snowmobiles, ATVs, all personal vehicles, what they refer to it as, on roads up to 45 miles per hour. I really think the city could use this as somewhat of a guideline, and instead of just enacting as is where it is, I think we should look into the, maybe try to get some more public comments, look into the new regulations a little bit closer. It does have some good and meat to it. I think that the information in here specifically lays out regulations on what kind of vehicle and what it has to be equipped with. I'm going down to what kind of a carburetor type device and safety devices, proper braking, has to have license plates and perfect lights to be able to operate these. I would think that with all the ATVs and snowmobiles that we have in the city, we could possibly use this time to update our current city code to make it more user-friendly. As we know, there's a lot of gray area right now. There's kids riding snowmobiles all over towns, cutting between roads and all little side trails and stuff. I don't necessarily feel that the 45 mile an hour per hour speed limit would be a good idea, but I think we could look at possibility of maybe allowing it for roads in the city of up to 25 miles per hour. That would allow people on side-by-sides to be able to access the beach, or be able to legally cut between one trail that ends here and goes through a couple little backroads and then end up over on another street. Right now, we have, in the city code, it's talking about up to 10 miles per hour speed limits and stuff, but it doesn't specifically say, you know, up to a 25 mile an hour road. And this would also impose some of the regulations about headlights and taillights requirements for these vehicles that are on these roadways. And I think there's a lot of good safety information in the state statute, or the state statute, I guess it would be administrative code, that is there. And I really think if you haven't read it, I think it would be really good to take the time to read over it and see if there's anything that you might want to update or adopt part of it or modify it. And I just think there's a lot of use in this community with ATVs and snowmobiles that not necessarily in the heart of town in next to city hall here, but we have a huge encompassing area, and I really think we should possibly look into this, maybe taking part of it and updating it, or at least getting some public comments and see what other people's opinions and stuff are. I mentioned this to a few different groups, just yesterday or the day before, that were big into the ATV use and stuff, and a lot of them didn't even realize it was coming up. A couple of them couldn't make it tonight. And I think it would be whoofus to possibly look a little further into it, and that's pretty much where I'm looking at. Just look into this a little bit. My recommendation would be to look at the, changing it from 45 to 25 miles an hour possibly. This would allow for people to be able to access the beach on a side-by-side from their house. If they travel within a reasonable time and they abide by all the regulations, have insurance, proper lighting, license plates on their vehicles, there's a lot of sideby, so they could go to the beach without having to trailer their vehicle across town in a reasonable manner. They could travel on these roads and highways, so.
Any questions of Mr. Dothett? Councilmember Baysden.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Alex, for your testimony. Alex and I grew, we lived together in the same neighborhood for quite a few years, had some of those same concerns, and I think after public testimony, if we can bring the police chief up and maybe ask a few questions too on some of these issues, because my understanding is, the biggest issue is we want to change the definition right now to coincide with what the state's done, and we would then maybe come back and look at this after we do that. So that's the comments that I have.
Councilmember Naxte.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll have the police chief come up and speak too, but you're a patrolman here, correct?
Yes.
Right, and I think some of the questions we're going to have for the chief are, you know, in a practicality sort of way, there are kids with snow machines that cross a road or get over so they can get out to a wetland or whatever they do. And how did you handle that in the department?
There was a lot of gray area in that. Even back then, it was just, you know, you had to use your best judgment, were they acting out of line or not. The 10 mile an hour speed limit is kind of what we used a lot, was as long as they were going slow and abiding by, you know, not excessive speeds and causing havoc, they could, you know, generally stay in that 10 miles an hour speed limit, kind of cross a roadway, or, you know, go down the side of a road for a little while, as long as they weren't spinning brodies in the middle of town or something like that. It was kind of, there's a lot of gray area, and that's why I think, you know, the state statute defines a little bit more and gives a little bit more leeway for that. And by defining up to 25 mile an hour road, there's a lot of little backroads and stuff that now people could possibly use to legally travel across it, as long as they were abiding by what's written in administrative code here, AAC. As long as their vehicles made that description, then they could travel through or across or around some of these small subdivisions, and you wouldn't have, because I talked to several people in the community, that, you know, they're getting pulled over in the summer, driving their side-by-side and getting pulled over, and because we have the seasonal enforcement officers, and they're out there looking for four-wheelers, or four-wheelers mostly in the summertime, and pulling people over, and they're just kind of getting a little perturbed. They're like, why, I just take my side-by-side from over by the golf course and go into another trail, and then I get pulled over for it, and they're just showing a couple. I talked to two or three different people that mentioned different stories about that, and I tried to encourage more people to come here and talk about it. I just saw it on the schedule, and that's why I came about, thinking this might be a time to possibly open it up for comment and possibly change something or make it a little bit less gray areas and easier to use, more user-friendly.
Any other questions of Mr. Dothett? Seeing none, thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3260-2021?
Anybody on Zoom can unmute yourself or use the raise hand feature.
So Police Chief Ross, would you be so inclined to help us out with maybe some questions that the body might have?
Certainly, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Baysden.
Thank you, Mayor. So Chief, just like Mr. Dothett has, some of the questions have, in your own words, why is it important that we make this change with what the state has introduced for the city of Kenai? What do you see being the best practice that we're doing right now with your police department, how you handle these situations?
So right now, when that regulation takes, I'm sorry, through the mayor, Mr. Councilperson Baysden, right now, when that regulation takes effect January 1 on roadways, under 45 mile an hour, under, ATVs will be allowed to operate. Our city ordinance or code that has not allowed ATVs on the road for years is based on a definition of off-road vehicle that will no longer apply when that happens. Our code says that an off-road vehicle is one that's not allowed on the road by state regulation, basically. So come January 1, all those ATVs will be allowed on the road by state regulation. So if that makes sense, Kenai Municipal Code says no off-road vehicles on bike paths, sidewalks, roads, parklands, private or public property without express permission. So if we don't change the definition, then off-road vehicles would probably be allowed in all those places, bike paths, sidewalks, parks and stuff. So it's important to change the definition, and that's all this does. I guess if the council wanted to revisit following some portion of the regulation, like Mr. Dothett suggests, or other council members might think is appropriate, then, like you said, Councilmember Baysden, that might be another ordinance after this. But right now, the definition needs to be changed in order for off-road vehicles not to be allowed on parklands and those other places where I'm sure they would not be appreciated, if that answers your question.
Follow-up?
Sorry, Mayor, just to follow up. Yeah, so I guess we're, I think it's going to get confusing probably once this takes effect, is we're going to be surrounded by the borough who can't, they can't make these changes, in my understanding. So, you know, I guess I'd use an example, if you lived in VIP and you lived across the spur on the borough side of the property, we're going to have individuals basically that live inside the city, and let's say they're going to go and try to recreate in the same area. Some of our people will have to break the law if they're going to drive their ATVs or snow machines to get to those areas. So, you know, at some point, we may want to address the issue that Mr. Dothett's talking about, is how can we safely allow people within a city to get to those areas, right? I think that's the biggest issue, because by the book of the law, they're breaking the law, and I think probably the department here, they've probably got a, you know, an understanding within the side of the department that probably unless, you know, kids are doing something crazy out there, they're not harassing them, but they're trying to keep them safe in the same way as the public. So I think that's the issue that the public's going to see as this, we didn't create this, but now the state's going to create a, I think, they're going to put something in place that's going to make it more difficult for us since we're surrounded by those areas, is my thought.
Councilmember Naxte.
Thank you. As a sponsor, I was going to give a, you know, but kind of backing up a little.
I was just wondering if we could, anybody that has any questions for Police Chief Ross?
Well, just kind of backing up before I kind of go, you know, just, you know, nothing changes in the borough, because the borough doesn't have any laws pertaining to off-road vehicles on borough roads. So, you know, it makes no difference, no change. I suppose you can drive your ATV on a 45 or less speed limit road, that's a state road that connects to borough roads outside of the city. That would be a change, but nothing changes in the borough, on the borough roads itself, which is not what this is really about. And as was stated, currently, it is illegal to take an ATV on a city or state road in the city of Kenai, and that's how our code is written. And, and that's how our code is written. But it also says, it makes reference to state law regulation. And basically, we could just change that little section and take the state regulation out and it would still be illegal to use an ATV. But it's a great opportunity while you're working on the definitions to also, and it's in definitions to include what a ATV is, all-train vehicle. And Mr. Bloom helped me with this part. And I really don't like lists because it's hard to make them all-inclusive, but in this particular case, it was, it was really kind of necessary. So the, the wording in section B of the ordinance, the, is where the definition is. So off-road motor vehicle means any self-propelled vehicle designed primarily for recreational cross-country travel on land, snow, ice or water or on more than one type of terrain and steered by wheels, tread, skis or any combination thereof, including vehicles that operate on a cushion of air, including but not limited vehicles, commonly known as all-terrain vehicles, four-wheelers, three-wheelers, side-by-sides, snow machines, hovercrafts, dune buggies or dirt bikes, or any motorized vehicle that is being operated off the maintained streets and roadways. So that'll be, that will be the new definition, which essentially is exactly what we have right now. And it just takes the, the state regulations out of it that are about to change here at the, at the end of the year, the first of the next year.
Thank you.
And I might have fallen off, but I, I think that it, in, in a city, that it's important that we, we maintain basically the rules that we have right now for, for public safety. I think if you're in a, in a village or a much smaller community, it's a whole different thing. And I think that's probably primarily what the, the governor and others were probably primarily thinking of. And it was just a blanket thing. And, and then they were allowing, allowing cities to make their own decisions. And, and this just kind of maintains the status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussions or question with Police Chief Ross? So the way I'm understanding that is that this simply keeps status quo after July, after January first, we're free to amend our code accordingly. That could, because I, I know it's sort of getting outside of the, maybe what we should be discussing related to this, this ordinance. But I, I know, as Councilman Raisin pointed out, I know over VIP, there's folks that like to access South Beach from VIP subdivision. And for a lot of them, it's just a couple of quick turns and then they're outside the city limits, you know, heading out to, out to the beach. But that being said, they don't necessarily ride, they, they'll, they'll drive the, the subdivision roads. But once they hit Canter Road, then they're in the right-of-way. And there is sort of a quasi-bike trail there. But as you mentioned, DOT, on state DOT roads, ATVs are, are allowed within the right-of-way. They're not necessarily on the traveled way of the road. And that, you know, is good and bad. I, I'm, I'm sort of, I think, I think that's, that's cool, provides some means of transportation for folks. But for anybody that's driven through K Beach in the springtime can attest to that's just a big mud hole and people actually go there to recreate. I mean, there was cases of people's utilities, you know, phone utilities being ripped out, services ripped out of their house because these ruts are getting so deep. And, you know, certainly that, I don't think, you know, it was, it was a constant battle of the repairing of shoulders and things like that. But I think there's probably a compromise in there somewhere. I'll be supporting this as is, but probably look forward to any sort of suggestions that other council members have moving forward with how to amend this that would sort of accommodate some, you know, traditional practices that are happening in our city right now. Councilman Royer?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I will be supporting this as a housekeeping measure with my understanding that we'll be revisiting this with the changes that maybe Mr. Dothet had suggested. I would highly recommend that when we do that, that maybe we put an exclusion in, in the month of July, simply because of the dipnet fishery. I see, I live right in the neighborhood with the dipnet fishery. So we have quite a few of the people that camp at the ballfields there that get on their ATVs and side-by-to-sides and they go ripping up and down the edge of the grass fields that we do maintain. And they rip up and down through the neighborhood, running stop signs just to get to the access point of the beach. So knowing the amount of people that go up and down through our neighborhood during that fishery, I would highly suggest to our body to look at, if we do look at future amendments, that we keep that in mind in that month of July. Because I can foresee this being a greater burden to a lot of the neighborhoods. And unfortunately, our neighborhood's right smack in the middle of the dipnet fishery. And I can foresee the ongoing problems that we would see with this. So I will be supporting this one, but I would just express caution about allowing off-road vehicles through the summer months when we have an increase in traffic and maybe putting the exclusion in there for that three weeks during the dipnet fishery. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Glenn Dunning?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yes, I too will be supporting this. It's a, it's a needed and, and timely recommendation. As Police Chief says, it secures our definitions. And we're under time constraint to have this done by the end of the year. Any future considerations or how we want to manage traffic in the city? Certainly is a, is a time for in the future and we can have a, a informed decision about that. But thank you for drawing this to our attention.
Further discussion, further discussions? Councilman, next, then.
Yeah, and I, I agree that there could be some further changes to this. And I, but I think that I would like to hear and understand a whole lot more about how our police handle these situations in July or in certain areas and, and what's appropriate and what they can do, you know, before we kind of move forward with any change, just, just to have a better understanding of that if, if, if anybody here does that. I think Police Chief Ross would be, I'd like, like to have his input.
Councilman Petty?
Yes, I had a constituent at the very, right before I came here, wanting to make some changes that I would like to see revisited, but with the time constraints of this. I will be supporting this and I really did appreciate your idea about the speed limit being reduced to twenty-five miles an hour and perhaps with unpaved roads, that that might could be put in there as well. So anyway, I'll be supporting this at this time, but look forward to updates and changes coming our way. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonart?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxdet?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Councilmember Raisin?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Thank you, Councilor, on item D six, resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash seventy-one, amending the employee classification plan to change the.
Can we have a break, please, sir?
Oh, yes. Take ten-minute eddies.
I guess this is pretty true. I think it's pretty consistent. So I might not say for sure.
I would not make that.
I mean, he wanted to cover everything. No, you don't. He said, I can't. I was like, actually, Mom wasn't here today. I didn't do anything today.
Something from.
He wants to know how to wear his costume.
That's fine.
In a box. But I don't want some of that. I do not have that.
I can assure you. I don't know. I should get this. I found approved invoice.
I'd like to call our meeting back to order here. And I believe we left off on item D six, resolution number two thousand twenty-one dash seventy-one, amending the employee classification plan to change the range of Parks and Recreation Director. Pleasure, council. Councilmember next then.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-one dash seventy-one.
I'll second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to resolution number two thousand twenty-one dash seventy-one?
Anybody on Zoom can unmute yourself or use the raise hand feature.
Okay, seen none. I guess I'll open it up to Mr. Ostrander to give us a little bit of an overview here.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Got to get close with my chair's not working. Yeah, so this resolution would modify the classification plan to change the Parks and Rec Director from a twenty-two to a twenty-three. Back in two thousand eighteen ordinance, three thousand eighteen, two thousand eighteen created a new class of employee called the Department Head Classification. And these employees are the department heads of the city. And it consists of those full-time employees, and they also serve at will. So they're the only employees in the city that serve at will. When three thousand eighteen, two thousand eighteen was adopted, all of the existing department heads had the option of either opting into the classified head service or remaining, or excuse me, opting into the department head service classification or remaining in the classified service. With the retirement of Mr. Frady's, we actually only have one department head who is now in the classified service. Once the new Parks and Rec Director position is hired, that one position will be the only one classified service. Everyone else will be in the department head service classification. As we were looking to hire this position, anytime we do, we look at the job description and we look to update it. And when we updated this and then we began to look at the other department head service class positions, it became evident that the Parks and Rec Director most appropriately should reside in range twenty-three. If you look at some of the other department head level positions that are comparable that are also range twenty-three, you've got the Planning Director, the Senior Center Director, and the Library Director, all of which are assigned to range twenty-three. And anytime we look at establishing a range for a certain position, we look at those positions that are similar in the organization. And again, if you look at those three positions and the responsibilities that those employees have, and then compare that to the Parks and Rec Director, we feel very strongly that, again, that Parks and Rec Director position is most appropriately, should be assigned to a range twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of administration? Councilmember Bezos.
Thank you, Mayor. So Paul, these are salary range positions. Is there, at what level does the salary range start? And are these, these are exempt positions? Am I thinking of that correctly?
Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Bezos. And so they are exempt positions, but there are also employees within the classified service that are exempt as well. The difference between the classified service and department head services, the department head service is within a salary range. And I think it is very similar to what you'll find at the borough. So a class twenty-three, I've got it here in the budget, but I could pull it up, but it ranges from, I think, seventy, or twenty, twenty-three is like seventy-nine thousand to a hundred and ten thousand is the range. Whereas in classified service, there's steps each of the way. So you'll start at a step A, and then you're on a schedule that each year you'll increase to the next step for the first six years. And then once you're here for six years, then you increase every other year for the remainder of the steps on the step scale. In department head class service, it's just a range. So it's up to the discretion of the city manager where that person is initially hired. And then as far as the increases in salary each year, it's, again, up to the discretion of the city manager, ultimately subject to appropriation by the council. But the city manager has the ability to set it anywhere within that range where, again, as the classified, it's structured in the way that they increase in their pay.
Yes, follow-up.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a follow-up then. And to get it right with your, with the way you have your employees at that level, this position is an at-will position, or now that's been changed?
Mr. Ostrander.
Through the mayor, councilmember Bezos. And so when three thousand eighteen, two thousand eighteen passed, this position became a department head service which is at-will. However, the employee that was in that position when that ordinance passed had the ability to either opt into classified, or excuse me, to opt into the department head service or stay in the classified. That individual chose to stay in the classified service and never did move to department head service. But the way three thousand eighteen, twenty eighteen is written, anytime there's a new hire, after the date of the passage of that ordinance, they would move into the department head service.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Ostrander? Vice Mayor Glenn Denny.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Do we have someone in our view for this position of Parks Director, maybe a final cohort of folks?
Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Glenn Denny, we do. I was waiting until this resolution passed before that final offer can be made to that individual. But right now, we have selected a candidate, and they are interested in accepting the position.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denny.
Yeah, with this change in salary description, has the job description changed also for this position?
Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Glenn Denny, there were very minor changes to the job description, really not a significant change.
Okay, so it recognizes the involvement with the Rec Center, with the hockey rink and the buildings, plus the three hundred acres they mow, plus, plus, plus.
Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Glenn Denny, yes, it recognizes the large scope of services that the Parks and Rec Director is responsible for.
Thank you.
Any further questions of the city manager? Councilmember Winger.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I was just wondering if, under the scope, since the pay range is going up, are we going to be able to see more events coming out of Parks and Rec? Are they going to have more of a creative aspect that they're going to bring to not only continue to grow the events that Parks and Recs does, but to bring new events in, to bring more people into our city?
Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Winger, I don't think that will be a result of this change, but I will tell you that that is something that is a high priority of mine. And the new director is going to be pursuing additional events. And I actually think that even now with this skating with Santa that we're doing this year and the changes that we've been made, I think you're already starting to see some of those new events. Well, a perfect example, Mr. Bloom and I today during our lunch hour went and played pickleball at the Rec Center, which has not been available forever, I don't think. And so that's another example of something new that's been provided. So again, it's a priority of mine to increase the number of events that we have and the number of opportunities that folks have in the Rec Center. I think the city taking over management of the Rec Center is going to open up a lot of opportunities that residents haven't seen for a long time.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions of city manager or discussion? Councilmember next then.
Request unanimous consent.
Thank you. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seen none. Resolution number two thousand twenty-one dash seventy-one is adopted. So that brings us to item F one, unfinished business, resolution number two thousand twenty-one dash sixty-four, awarding an agreement for the Kenai Waterfront Redevelopment Assessment and Feasibility Study. And there's a clerk's note at the November third, two thousand twenty-one meeting, this item was postponed to this meeting. A motion to enact is on the floor. So we'll pick up where we left off on a motion to enact. And I don't believe there was any amendment to that. Resolution, I'm correct. Okay, thank you. Councilmember next then.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, and when we discussed this, we had two new council members on, and they stated that they had not had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Ostrander and didn't have the information necessary to be able to make an informed decision. So it sounded like the timing was such that it was okay to postpone for a while to get to that point. I thought it was appropriate to do so, even though it wasn't pertinent to really the discussion that we had in front of us. So we're back to that now. And really, what we're here to do is award a contract for, to McKinley Research Group. It's really not a discussion of appropriation. We've already done that and determined that the project is moving forward. It was just, what we're doing now is simply the resolution for the contract. And the evaluation would be, was there an appropriate advertisement and review done to determine whether or not McKinley Group, Research Group is the highest score or not? And they also fell within the existing budget. So really, based on that information, there's no reason to not approve this contract moving forward.
Thank you, councilmember. Next, I had further discussion? Councilmember Winger.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I was one of the people that were able to meet with administration to answer questions and concerns when it came to the waterfront study. For me personally, still going forth, talking with people in our community, there is a lot of concern about the scope of this waterfront study. Lot of concern that we are looking at private property. Government overreach was mentioned by quite a few constituents. The concern being that this is private land that we're looking at studying. And when we talk about the key aspect, we should be looking at the key city land and not private property. As much as I want to support development and see development in our city, I think that there are ways that we can do this without going to the study. If we want to have conversations with the public, we should be holding work sessions to have those conversations with the public. The scope of this work and this contract, if it was isolated down to the city properties, maybe including a harbor plan, or looking at what we could better do with our key property, which for me, the key property in this waterfront area, that city land would be the dock. And so I'd like to see the scope of this down to the city land and not private property. In the end, we can spend the money, we can form a plan, we can, you know, sell rainbows and dreams to our constituents, but nothing says that the seventy-four percent of private ownership is going to get on board with our vision. And because of that, I think that this money would be best spent directly offering incentives. My understanding from conversations with the administration in our meeting was there is a draft ordinance for what they would do for incentives. So I feel we already know what we'll do to incentivize. We have the ability to do zoning training. We have nobody knocking on these properties saying, hey, we have this developmental plan. And I'm afraid that if we start looking at doing waterfront studies for private property and private development on these lands, then we're going to have to do that for all private property in the city of Kenai. There's other areas of our city that need to be looked at for development. We could say the bowling alley, and maybe what we could do to attract investors and developers for that property. So if we're going to do this for this specific area in these private developments, then we have to really look at studying and how we're going to incentivize study, grow a vision on all private developments. Picking and choosing, maybe this one's more valuable because it brings in a stronger tax revenue, isn't, doesn't sit well with me either. I would think that we all, all business in the city would be valuable regardless of the tax revenue that it would generate. And so if we're going to be looking at private development and studying private development to build incentives and visions for development, then we really have to do that across the board for all development within our city. And I can see that being coming a really slippery slope for our body, constantly looking at all private development. Really, the focus should be what we have and what our assets are, which is only about twenty, twenty-five percent of the ownership. And so for that, I will not be supporting this.
Further discussion? Councilmember next then.
Yeah, just some of what I just heard, I'd like to point out that, you know, we are a city and we have zoning. We also have a comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan and the zoning does not just include city, city property. But again, the resolution before us doesn't have to do with that. It has to do with McKinley Research Group versus PDC Division regarding their, and Agnew, regarding their proposals, whether or not it's substantiated or not. And perhaps Mr. Ostrander could provide us any information on the review and the process that you went through, because that is what we're here to talk about.
Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember next, Ed. So, yeah, obviously, there's a process that went in front of the RFP process where there was a work session and then an appropriating ordinance that authorized me to issue an RFP with a budget of ninety-five thousand dollars. We issued the RFP. It advertised for three weeks. We extended it for a week. We did receive three proposals. We had a group of three that utilized a matrix to determine which of those three proposals were in the best interest of the city and could be awarded with the budgetary constraints that we had. Once we were done with that, McKinley was the clear leader of the three that did submit, and that's why you have the resolution in front of you tonight.
Councilmember Bezos.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm confused. I want to make sure that I'm not confused dealing with this here. The council is, we're voting on whether we're going to award the amount to this. This is about the entire project. This is not just about the RFP. Am I missing something here? Is... Is this not about this entire project? Because we're awarding the $95,000, so for myself and the other new council member, the reason why we postponed that was so we could gather more information. So am I correct in that or not? I don't doubt that the RFP was followed and that the scores were done properly, that's not the reason why I asked for the delay. The delay was for me to get more information. So am I not voting on appropriation here?
Right, so the action of this was there was a positive action by direction given to administration to go out for an RFP after the work session regarding the development, the waterfront redevelopment. And there was affirmative action there requesting that administration go out for an RFP, which they did. That's where we're at now. They went through that process, developed, with McKinley Group scoring the highest point. So where we're at today would be awarding that contract to McKinley. I'll let Mr. Ostrander weigh in here too.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. And I think to answer your question directly, Councilmember Basen, the money for this project has already been appropriated by ordinance. So the ordinance did two things, it appropriated the money for the project and then it directed administration to issue an RFP. So what this resolution do, does, excuse me, is awards the contract to McKinley.
So my follow-up through the mayor, thank you, Mayor, through the city manager then. So prior to myself or back in July, when you guys did this, I'm thinking so July or August timeframe, so we're not, this body here is not, we're not deliberating on whether we want to spend, appropriate that money. It's already been done, it's already been, that's already been decided. So I guess I had a, my thought was a little bit more broader than that, was we were trying to, as new members, we were trying to bring in more information to help make that decision because, you know, our votes were going to be there. So basically, if I voted no on this, would I be voting no against, because I didn't think the RFP was done correctly? Is that what I'm looking at? I guess maybe.
Well, I don't know if you'd be voting for it as that being incorrectly done, but just voting no as a, as awarding the RFP.
Yeah, I guess, again, I don't think there was any process wrong with what administration, what council asked them to do. I expect everything is proper, we've got a chance to see the RFP, we've met with administration, we've met with the finance director, we've had all those conversations. But again, I was trying to think that this was a situation where we were going to bring this to a head and vote yes or no on the project, and what I'm hearing is that's not what we're voting on. So I just want to make sure that's correct.
Yeah, Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, and Councilmember Basen. So this resolution does award a contract. With that being said, council within their authority has the ability to change your mind. You can decide that you want to appropriate money, and then you can direct administration to go through the RFP, we can issue the RFP, we can provide a resolution for you to award. You could change your mind and not do this because you've had second thoughts, that now you don't think the project is good. So you still have the ability to vote against this resolution because you don't like the project. From a process standpoint, and as far as the city and the way we conduct business and the way we're perceived by those contractors that are out there, it's not a best practice to do that because you're exercising contractors, they've spent, in some cases, hundreds of hours putting together proposal, and then the body changes its mind. So it is within your authority to do it, it's certainly not a best practice to do so.
Vice Mayor Glenn Dunning?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, I listened in on the discussions and the questions our newest members had, and their question was to the genesis and the scope of why we got to this point. And my hope was that they would have, after visiting with administration, they would have a thorough understanding of the scope of it and why we're doing it, rather than just to vote for authorization of a contractor for funds. And I don't think that that understanding has been reached yet, in my estimation. I would think they might have more questions, might think that scope of the work is too small, too narrow. There's questions raised about, excuse me? There's questions raised about a harbor master plan, there's properties across the river that are included in waterfront. There's the Cool Committee, which bolts right onto this, that there was considerations made for event areas. And then, of course, we have the specter of the bluff erosion project, which is kind of the driver of what we're doing on our waterfront. So I don't know if our newest members are satisfied with the understanding of where we are in the process. Thank you.
I would probably let the newest members speak for themselves, Mr. or Vice Mayor Glenn Dunning. I guess where I'm at with this is when you look at areas within the city specific to development, that you sort of look at, start with the comprehensive plan, that's always a good place to start. But clearly, there's probably treasures within your community that you can identify as areas that you might be able to develop, to bring people, to attract people to Kenai, more so than other areas. In this case, our waterfront is, you know, probably our, you know, one of our jewels of our land, not necessarily, some of it's ours, a lot is private, there's no question about it. But the fact of the matter is, is that's an area that's going to attract people. And as I heard through that work session, do I need to pass the gavel here? No, good, okay, okay, thank you. That we want people to make a right-hand turn in Saldana, I heard that several times echoed. This, what this does is there's no, there's nothing burden placed on private land ownership. You look at an area that's not a residential area, if I'm not mistaken, most of that is probably zoned as heavy industrial, so, and I believe all of it is correct. So when you look at permitted uses for heavy industrial, it is quite extensive. In fact, there's probably more things that are allowed and permitted as a permitted use than we would think, I would think would be appropriate next to a river, like a petrochemical plant, let's say. That might be a subject of a different conversation. But what this does, and you know, it's what I ask people, to go through and look at, what are we paying for here? Because that's the crux of, if you're in that boat that you want to check a box that says you want to explore ways to vitalize Kenai and bring people to Kenai, that's a box you're going to check. You can leave it unchecked if you want, not do anything, do things status quo. This is being a little proactive in that regard, and one of the things you're going to do is you're going to engage the community development to develop a vision and core concepts and priorities, evaluate market conditions and identify opportunities for potential revitalization of the area. But one, you know, there's quite a few elements, there's, I think, six elements listed here, the last one being develop an implementation strategy and recommendations. The one I like the best is number five, identify economic strategies, including private-public partnerships, external funding opportunities, improvement district, and incentives that encourage redevelopment of the area. So there's things that we are going to get out of this, this is what we're paying for. At the end of the day, once we get this report, you know, it can go on a shelf, there's still that do-nothing box is still checked, but it provides an opportunity, it's that first step that you can identify that we are trying to do something to attract people to Kenai. There's no, we're not going to, you know, seize people's private property here, and I'll be the first one, and I'm the one, I don't think that we, as a government, should be the ones down there buying property and doing development that should be better suited to the private industry. That's what we're trying to do here. If you look at what happened with the airport, you know, there was a plan implemented for the airport, those are public lands, correct, but the dollars that, what's going on over there is infusion of private dollars that are developing the airport. You know, that's what I want to see is, you know, in this case, it's even a better scenario because it's privately owned, private dollars that are going into the development. This is our way of saying, what can we do to help that along? So I think I made my position pretty clear on this, but if you say no to this, then at some level, I think, you know, I'm curious to where you are, where we're going to develop some of these areas and trying to draw, attract, you know, businesses and people to Kenai, to make that right-hand turn in Saldana. Further discussion? Councilmember Basen?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I guess, you know, again, coming late to this and knowing that the council has discussed this and they've appropriated funding for the RFP, so they gave administration permission to go out and do this. So that was done, and it was done properly. You know, I want this to succeed also, I mean, I don't, we want to be, we want to look at it as trying to incentivize the city. I go back and forth on this, I'm going back and forth on this right now in my head because where we're at in the situation is not, you know, if I'd have been sitting here probably four or five months ago, I probably would have been a no vote on this, is where I would have been. But because of where we're at right now, that's what I'm struggling with, because of the hard work that's been put into it by the group that's went out and we're getting ready to award the bid. And it's not about, it's not a no vote to the administration, it's no, because I worry about all the amount of private land that we got down there, that we have there, that we don't really have a whole lot of influence, and we got a lot of private land, we got leases, no matter what this plan comes up with, you know, whether they buy into it or not is a big deal, because we're so many years into that development down there, we know what direction we want to go in, I don't know how much influence we have. And that's just kind of where I'm at, you know, spending $100,000 of taxpayer money that might, you know, I've probably got a 50/50 chance that this is going to work or not work. And that's where I struggle with it. But I guess I'm struggling probably just where we are in the process, because I probably would have a different vote where we were in the process before now.
Councilmember Salar.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. To echo what Councilmember Basen just said, it's daunting to come late to the party, and my question back on November 3 was about what percentage of acreage is involved between city acreage and private acreage. And this was provided in the packet, the information's here, so first of all, I want to say thank you very much, and the map and the chart's just great. My first impression when I looked at this, and I really appreciated the way it was laid out and the way it was color-coded, I looked at that 74.41%, and I about couldn't breathe for 10 seconds. I mean, that floored me, because in my mind, I had this preconceived notion that this project was going to be about 80% city land and 20% private land. And I was very wrong. And when I look at this, I, I mean, I understand the vision for the development, I'm one of those people that will sit down with you over coffee and go, yeah, this would be great, I want to see it developed. But to the extent that we're now studying 75% of the scope of this project, I guess from what I'm hearing, has already been approved, that is, for me, those are daunting numbers, and that's hard to chew on, that 75% private. If it were, if the project were more focused, say on, I'm looking at the chart right now, our city dock, I think the cannery area that we own up in here, that's leased, not the cannery, but the fishing area that's leased up there, with maybe, say, even the private parcel next to it, the port of Kenai. If that was our focus, what could we do with those pieces? I would be probably more apt to quickly jump on board with this. But to look at this and having bounced us off several constituents, and in talking with several of them, their, I mean, their reaction is that this is just government overreach. And I understand the necessity of balancing a city's vision for what is the premier property that our city could develop to make people turn right at the Y. I mean, I get that, but how far is this project going to step on the toes of private property owners in the middle of all this? And it's, and at this point of the game, and I'm going to ask for clarification again, if I vote yes, am I saying yes to McKinley? Or am I saying yes to this whole project? If I vote no, am I saying no to McKinley? And therefore, it will go to entity number two? Or am I saying no to the project? I'm still not sure what I'm saying no or yes to.
So you would, voting, a yes vote for this would be passing this resolution, which would award the RFP and all of the scope of services that's listed under Kenai waterfront redevelopment assessment and feasibility study, which is an agreement that would be made between the city of Kenai and McKinley Research, defined with the scope that is defined in the resolution, and the funding appropriated.
And if I vote no? Thank you, thank you. And if I vote no, then I'm saying no to this resolution to appropriating the funds to McKinley Group. Therefore, does the council then look at the next entity?
No. No, that's a difference. So you're, as far as awarding it to the next, the second place?
I just want to make sure I understand what I'm voting for.
Yeah, a no vote would be to not award the contract under the scope provided to McKinley. So it's dead, it kills it.
Okay.
All around.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Petty?
Yes, I was at the work session, and there was great private interest in this, and everyone that spoke there was looking at the comprehensive plan and the feasibility study, and the opportunity to partner with the city in a developmental plan to bring, to attract new businesses and new people and opportunities to development for that space down there, was enthusiastically, from the public's point of view, embraced. And we went through the proper process, and these resources were approved to go forward to have a feasibility study put together, and that was approved properly. And then the administration was tasked to move forward with a request for a proposal for bids to come in. And from where I sit and from my point of view, if you vote no on this, it is reflecting very poorly on the city and will not look advantageously for Kenai to be open for business, because we have a point of integrity as far as the city is concerned to do what we say that we're going to do. And if you vote no on this, you're going to say they're not really serious in what they put their minds to. So I would highly suggest and encourage you to vote yes on this, to move forward with the development of this feasibility study, so that this would come cohesively as we're getting the bluff stabilization opportunity created down there, and it just works hand in hand as we're working to develop and partnering with private owners down there, not dictating in any way, shape, form, or fashion government overreach, so that we would be poised to do our utmost best to showcase one of the shining bright spaces of our community. Thank you. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilor Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. You know, again, I think with, for me, I struggle with a yes vote with this RFP simply because of the scope of work includes these private lots, which we did not hear from all of the private landowners. We had a one-hour work session. We had two of the landowners show up that has land in this area. The whole hour discussion was on one chunk of land, the port of Kenai, who, they were very eager to partner and work with the city in developing this land. They do have it for sale, so this is land that's going to be for sale and not necessarily that representative developing it. I would encourage them to continue to work with the city so that they under, have an understanding on how we will go forth with working to support their, their sell of their land as well as the development and the investment. We have plenty of other key lands in the City of Kenai that we can look at too for studies to see how we can better grow it and what we can do in those spaces. We have the Marathon Road area, we have the area over by the soccer fields that have a lot of room to be developed. We are donating land in both those areas. So as those areas in our city are growing, it may be best to look at studying how we can drive the economy in those growing new areas. I would be more inclined to support this if it was focused on what our key assets are and our key land. And when we look at this waterfront survey, that really is the harbor, the city dock, I'd like to see this RFP scope down into our key assets. And I think we already have a good understanding of what we would have to do for zoning. We have a good understanding on what we would do with incentives. I do wish that we would have had more work sessions and a public process, a one-hour work session, where we heard specifically from two individuals, just wasn't adequate representation in comments. I, I had a lot of comments and questions that I didn't even get to ask in that work session. It was one hour, we were done, we had to get ready for our council meeting. So I do wish that we would have had more public comment process before we got to this. In the end, we don't have an investor knocking on our door on this property. It's been for sale for four years, the port of Kenai property. There's no developer, there's no investor. I think if they came to us with a plan, that's when we could definitely dive in and say we're, we're happy to work with you, we're happy that you're considering your development in the city. But to sink a hundred thousand dollars into a project that could just end up on the shelf or ultimately any one of these private entities can not go with our vision, to strengthen our plan would really be to look at the harbor. I think if we put money into our harbor, it will encourage development. They're going to see that we're bettering our, our dock, our harbor, they're going to see that investment, they're going to see renovation in that area that would attract investors and developers. So I think that we should be focusing on our own land and our own house and what we can do within that and not scoping out into private land. I didn't get a good enough representation in that one-hour work session from owners or community. The ones that I have talked to have stated government overreach or have stated, if you came and knocked on my door and told me your vision for my property, it'd slam the door in your face. And if that's the case, then we can't say that this plan will go anywhere and then we're back to square one of, we just spent a hundred thousand dollars of your money and got nowhere with it. And I think we can best use that money. We have a whole list of capital improvement projects. We could directly put this money into incentives. Conversations are cheap, we can hold more work sessions to have conversations with our public. And I think we have a good grasp on the other needs. And when we're developing visions, we should be developing the visions within our own land and not looking at our neighbor's land and doing visions for their land. Thank you.
So for clarification, Councilwoman Winger, did you, did you talk to, you said that you had negative comments from these landowners?
No, not from those landowners, no.
So nobody from the, the listed properties here privately owned contacted you?
We have spoke, we have spoke to two landowners in this. No, it wasn't negative, it's negative from the community, from constituents.
So non-people from outside, but one, okay, just wanted a clarification. Further discussion? Councilor Naxte?
Try not to reiterate too much. This, this is a, kind of...
Go ahead.
Do you have a break?
Did you want a break? Councilor Naxte, go ahead.
Thank you. I didn't know that that was a rule that had been upheld strictly.
It's not upheld.
But this is a, this is assessment and feasibility study. It's a study, and it really has no bearing, does nothing to a property. And I've heard the term government overreach. It is a study. It really doesn't require anybody to do anything. It's, it provides an idea of a possible development strategy. And the, the consultant will be meeting with and, and working with the property owners to discuss the possibilities of how they might fit into it if they choose to, and some may not at all, in which case, you know, there's going to be, it might be two, two areas that say that, that want to participate down the road. But it is a, it is a study for a possibility down the road, and you really have to have a plan before you get started. And that's all this, this is. It, it doesn't, and I've heard the term cram it down somebody's throat, it doesn't do that, and it's not overreach on anybody. It's just an assessment and feasibility study. And there'll be, there'll be some additional public hearings as well as meetings with the, the property owners. So I will be voting for this.
Councilor, Vice Mayor Glendinning?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Just a question about the scope of the RFP. We have a June 29th memo with discussion item introduced, an introduction of the Kenai Waterfront Revitalization. And it talks about attachments, and of course, we have the Kenai Waterfront Development Incentive Timeline, but it also talks about proposed incentive tools for economic development or redevelopment in Kenai. Does the scope of work in this RFP bleed over to this concept of economic development or redevelopment in Kenai? We talk about tax exemption for economic development, we talk about tax exemption for depreciated property development, we talk about Kenai Commercial Building Fee Waiver Program, we talk about storefront improvement, and of course, the fifth is the Kenai Waterfront Revitalization. Is it, is it a bifurcated proposal, or are we just on the Kenai Waterfront Revitalization? And the, the property tax, the depreciated property, the building fee, and the storefront improvement is, is focused only on, on the property shown in the map?
Mr. Osterner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Vice Mayor Glendinning. So what you see in front of you there is a timeline that administration provided, which included a couple of things. One was the feasibility study that you have in front of us. And the reality is, as, as the consultant gets involved and they're, and they're looking and working on this area and determining what types of tools the city might want to use, they may suggest some of those things. However, what that was intended to represent is what administration's plan was, not only with the waterfront feasibility study, but with also some of these other incentives that councils made it very clear they want to see so that we're seen as business-friendly as possible. So when you talk about property tax incentives or the waiver of building fees or the incentives for revitalization of vacant or dilapidated buildings, those are things that we have on our schedule to work on. There is actually a draft, there is some draft work on those things. We've got a team that's been working on those. Attorney Bloom has been looking at what our options are as far as those property tax incentives, but those would apply everywhere in the city, not just in this waterfront area. The reason that you haven't seen those in front of you is because we only have so much capacity, and we're trying to get through this process first. Once we can get through this, then we can move on to the other incentives that are going, that, that we believe and council has stated clearly is going to position the city for the greatest success possible in the future by attracting those businesses that we need to succeed.
So what I get from this, this would be potentially a, a, a pattern or conceptual development for those who would seek to invest money in, in their business, in properties, development in our city apart from the waterfront.
Mr. Osterner?
Mayor Gabriel, Vice Mayor Glendinning, I think I understand the question. Yes, this would, those incentives, assuming that once they were structured and presented to council, that you approved that ordinance, making those changes to our code that would, would incentivize those types of, of business ventures in our city, yes, that would apply outside of this waterfront. You know, as far as the waterfront feasibility study goes itself, you know, I don't know, and I can't, I mean, I could speculate on what types of incentives they might encourage us to consider in the waterfront, but it may very well extend beyond that. You know, you don't see us discussing public-private partnerships as a part of that either. And, and again, I'm speculating, but that is possible, that this consultant could come back to us and say, you need to consider a public-private partnership. If you've got a private individual down there and they have an interested investor, but they need that help from the city to make it happen, that's something you should consider. Or they may state that we should look at establishing essential infrastructure that is going to incentivize that development down there, which is again, essentially a public-private partnership, but it's something that the city could potentially do to encourage development on that private property. But again, some of that is speculation on my part. I don't know, we don't have the expertise in-house to determine what those necessary tools are. That's the intent of this study.
Councilor Sonar?
Mayor Gabriel, you mentioned the airport and pointed out all of the, the private investment money that's going into businesses that are building up along that airport land. My question to you is, was, has there been a feasibility study done then for the airport?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think it was during Rick Cook's tenure, was it, Mr. Osterner?
Yes.
Yes.
And in your opinion, do you think that the development, the positive development that we're seeing along the airport with the investor of this private business stuff that's happening down there, is that a result of because the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted from a feasibility study?
Well, I think that gave us a template of how we can move forward to, there, there was things in, in, you know, when people hear feasibility studies, and a feasibility study is only as good as, as the end product. I think that it comes out of it, of whether it gets shelved or whether you utilize that or implement. All are part of the elements that are suggested in that. Depends on the council, it depends on what makes sense for your city. But I definitely believe that there was, there was a, a direction there, it gave us direction of how we could more uniformly apply our leases to, especially within the reserve, and how we could treat potential leases, and then within that context, how to incentivize development through capital credits for the development projects and for lease payments and over a certain time depending on the, the level of development. So the, the administration fleshed out the final product, but I think the basis of it is, is, was grounded in, in what came out of that, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Bloom?
Yeah, Mayor Porter, and just for Ms. Sonar, just so you also know, after that feasibility study, sorry, we hired an airport consultant that helped us look at other airports in the nation of similar size and helped us develop our rates and our agreements with the airlines as well as our leases and how our leases were structured. And I think that's sort of the fruition and led to more development by more favorable lease terms and looking at how other airports were, were doing it.
Thank you, Scott. And like I said, that was a result of a lot of outside, you know, influences that were, that sort of led, led me to have, you know, to give them more credibility of understanding of how those can help you, guide you. I don't know what those things, I don't know if anybody, and as Paul just mentioned, this is, you know, the, the expertise required to maybe come up with this is outside of our administration right now. That's why you hire consultants. They know what they're doing, and, and I think, you know, you'll, you'll get an end product that will give you an idea of direction, if that's your intention, is to develop parts of the city. Again, I don't think it's something, I'm, I'm not a, a public, you know, I don't think we, the government should do what private industry can do better. I'm a firm believer in that. And I think, but I think this sort of gives the nudge to private industry, if that makes sense. Vice Mayor Glendinning? Did you have a follow-up? Councilor Sonar?
Just, thank you.
Oh, thanks.
Just a quick question. McKinley Group was involved in the airport considerations, were they not, as a contractor for us?
I can't remember, Vice Mayor Glendinning, Paul, do you recall? That was a while ago when we did that work. Oh, there we go. Mr. Uebe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Glendinning. I don't believe they were involved in that assessment, but we did utilize them when we looked at the, the benefit or cost benefit of lease versus sale of airport property. They, they did do some work for us on, on determining or helping us work through that process.
Thank you. That was just clarification. I, I remember the McDonald Group being, but are they, they're the McDonald Group? Okay, I know that makes sense. So just to clear up that, clarification. Any, any further discussion on Resolution Number 2021-64? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxte?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
No.
Vice Mayor Glendinning?
Yes.
Councilmember Bason?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Thank you. Council, that moves us to Action, G, G7. Action Approval Special Use Permit to American Red Cross of Alaska for General Office Space. And maybe Mr. Osterner can give us a little background on, on this. Mr. Osterner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So Red Cross has been at the Beacon Facility, which is the, it's the, it's off Marathon Road. It's where the training, the fire training is for our, for anybody who's working on an airport. And there's an upper area that is controlled by the city, the downstairs is almost exclusively, is exclusively controlled by Beacon. And then another area of it actually has the Boys and Girls Club. Anyways, Red Cross has 475 square feet of office space on the second floor. They have been utilizing that space for the last year at no cost. What this does is issues a special use permit, which is, is more appropriate than a lease because if that space is, needs to be utilized for some other revenue generating purpose for the airport, we need to do that. The one change you will see in here, though, is that they're still paying a dollar per month as they did last year. However, we calculated the amount of utilities that they should be responsible for, so they are now paying for $211.44 of utilities per month.
Thank you, Mr. Osterner. First of all, can we have a, a motion to approve? Councilor Naxte?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to authorize the city manager to issue a special use permit to the American Red Cross of Alaska effective December 1st, 2021, through November 30th, 2022.
Second that.
Discussion on the motion?
Request unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, that action approval item is approved, and just to say that, it is nice to have them as a partner in our community here. G8, action approval, council confirmation, mayor nominations to the city's commissions and committees. Can we, I guess I'll, I'll open the motion from the floor, whether you want to take them all at once or, or divide the question. Anybody want to take a run at that? Councilmember Naxte?
Sure. I move to approve the nominations brought forward by the, the mayor for Airport Commission, Dan Pitts, the reappointment, Jacob Caldwell, a new appointment. Frances Kilfoyle, a new appointment, Harbor Commission, Nate Berger, a reappointment, and also Victoria Askin, a new appointment, Parks and Recreation Commission, Charlie Stevens, a reappointment, and Jennifer Johnis, reappointment.
Sir, a second?
I'll second request unanimous consent.
Very good. And just for clarification, further down on the memo, there is a, um, my nominations for planning and zoning, but that code's a little bit different, just, just to eliminate confusion, where they're nominated at one meeting and then confirmed at the next meeting. So that's the reason they're not, they're parsed out of this. So we're, just for clarification, we're just dealing with the reappointments and new appointments that Councilmember Naxte had just laid out. So that, mind, unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the mayoral nominations for state commission and committee are approved. Next is action item G nine, confirmation of mayoral nominations for appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do we take this right now?
Yes, as I recall, the code says that they may be.
Maybe. Okay, very good. Council, Vice Mayor Glendening, I'll let you run with this. I know you just spoke to me prior to the meeting.
Uh, yes. I move that we postpone action on this approval until the January 5th meeting. Thank you.
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Petty?
Is there a reason why we can't move forward on this? Is there some sort of clerical difficulty?
There, no, as, as was stated, we, that we may move forward with this, or go to the next meeting. The motion, I don't think there is a reason we can't take action right now. The motion is to postpone. And if the maker wants to elaborate on that, I'd leave it up to him. No elaboration. Further discussion? Councilmember Naxte?
I, I guess without a reason, I, I would be kind of reluctant to agree with it.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Naxte?
No.
Mayor Gabriel?
No.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glendening?
Yes.
Councilmember Baysden?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
No.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Okay. So we'll be considering those at our next meeting. Next up, we have item G 10, action approval, city participation in UCIDA. And just so people, it's an acronym, United Cook Inlet, Drifters Association, United Cook Inlet Drifters Association is what UCIDA stands for. And can, can we get a motion to approve first, and then I'll have Mr. Bloom speak to this. Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-52, opposing Amendment 14 to the Fishery Management Plan for Salmon Fisheries.
Actually, this is, that was just an informational item. All we're doing is just, um, we're just basically getting a, a, a action to approve direction for the city, city participation in the UCIDA lawsuit, is what the motion should be.
Okay. Sorry about that. I'd like to make a motion for the city's participation in the UCIDA lawsuit.
Sir, a second?
I'll second.
Second, okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Mr. Bloom kind of give a quick overview here before we discuss further. Mr. Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel and members of council. So if, and for our new members of council, council has twice passed resolutions. This lawsuit has to do with the closure of what's called the EEZ. So there's sort of a donut hole in the middle of Cook Inlet that is managed by the federal government per the Magnuson Stevens Act. And traditionally, there's been a state fishery, our drift gill net fleets in Cook Inlet have fished in those federal waters. The federal government has proposed to close down those waters to drift, commercial drift fishing, which according to UCIDA would greatly impact their ability to make a living fishing in Cook Inlet. So council has twice submitted resolutions to the federal government, saying we oppose the way that this, the closure of this, based on the way that it was done. Now UCIDA, as long as, has filed a lawsuit, appealing the federal decision to close those waters to commercial fishing. And what, I guess there's been interest by council to continue to try and influence the decision to keep this, these federal waters open to commercial fishing. UCIDA's not the only entity that's filed a lawsuit. There's another lawsuit filed by a group of fishermen in Homer that sort of deals with aspects of the decision that I don't think the city wants to be involved in. Basically, their argument is that NOAA didn't have the authority to, the National Marine Fisheries Association, sorry, didn't have the authority to close the waters because Congress didn't confer that authority on them. That's sort of not an argument that I think really the city has an interest in. That's sort of a technical legal argument. Part of UCIDA's lawsuit is that the federal government didn't comply with the requirements of the Magnuson Stevens Act when they decided to shut down that area to commercial fishing. And specifically, I think the city's interest is that the federal government concluded in their findings that there would be very little economic impact to the city of Kenai in the closure of that fisheries. So if council was interested in participating in the lawsuit, I think that would be our narrow focus, that, look, as a city, we were never consulted. We think there is a large impact to the city and the fishermen that participate in the fishery. We're not a party to the lawsuit, and I certainly would not suggest that we join the lawsuit as a party, but there is what's called an, an opportunity to file an amicus brief, which is sort of what's also called a friend of the court. We would just file our position with the judge that's making the decision and say, hey, here's our narrow interest. We're not a party. And the judge has the discretion to consider our amicus brief or not. Homer, on Monday, they had a city council meeting, and they directed their council to participate in the lawsuit by amicus brief. I also talked to the attorney for the city of Seward, and they're evaluating whether they want to do it as well. And I think there's the possibility for all three cities to get together, maybe even the borough, pool resources, and file one brief. So I, the schedule, I've talked to the attorney for UCIDA, he's out of Seattle, and they filed a request for expedited consideration, because I think they want this to get resolved before next summer. They had proposed that they would file their opening brief in this appeal by February 7th, which would give us, by the court rules, seven days to file our amicus brief. So that'd be due February 14th. So there's not really a huge time crunch right now. What I would actually ask is just for council to direct me to continue working with these other municipalities and attorneys, and come up with what I think is the best plan and make, run that by you, and then have authorization to actually sign our name to a brief. Just so you know, also, PacStar is part of, what's the name of the group that they're, the Salmon Alliance?
Alaska Salmon Alliance, or ASA.
Alaska Salmon Alliance, that a lot of the canneries are a part of, are also going to be filing an amicus brief. And they've also offered to pay their attorney with their money, sort of to be available for me to help strategize and structure the path forward. So there's a lot of moving parts right now that I don't completely have all the answers to. But if council wants, what I would do is just engage and get a plan together and then come back for a final approval before we actually signed our name to a brief.
Thank you. So I guess the motion on the floor, would that, does that pretty much cover what you're requesting, Mr. Bloom?
Yeah. What I'm requesting is just sort of the council's direction to spend my time trying to work, work on a plan moving forward.
And I, I think that was kind of encompassed by the, by the motion. So, thank you, Mr. Bloom. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I think, I think our body has strongly stood on our feet on this issue. We understand the vital importance of the fishery and the, really the, the burden it's going to put on members of our community, both locally as well as neighboring communities. We're all one borough, and standing together on this issue, I think, will have a lot of weight to it. I know Mr. Ruffner reached out to me today. He was really pleased that the Homer Council had given the direction, was hoping that we would as well. And he was feeling pretty confident that Seward would come through on their, on their meeting as well. I think this is one that we've participated in to this point, knowing what the impact's going to be to our community and the economy. And I just, I fully support this, and I thank you for your time working with all the other entities on this.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes, sorry, Mayor Gabriel. Just one thing I forgot, too, is this is something I'd be handling in-house. We wouldn't have to expend funds on outside council, so there wouldn't be a direct cost to the city other than our administrative time.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Councilmember Naxte?
All my, my questions have been answered, and, and I, I concur with this. And I know it's a little unusual, but I do see that Mr. Ruffner is zoomed in there. If perhaps council had some questions of Mr. Ruffner, or if he had anything more to add, just suggesting that.
If there's, if there's no objection to the, from the body, I would, for Mr. Robert Ruffner. Hey, Robert, you got your mic on, but you have the floor. There you go.
Okay, yeah, great. Thank, thank you, Mayor Gabriel, and Councilmember Naxte, for the opportunity. I, I don't think I have a whole lot to add. I mean, it sounds, sounds good. I think your attorney, Mr. Bloom, did a, did a great job kind of summarizing what the, what the city's interest is, and kind of the narrow focus that they should, should, should strive for, because the lawsuit is a, is a big, has a lot of moving parts, and it's complicated. So, you know, the fisheries are highly regulated, and when they are regulated in a way that takes a bad hop for a, a local government, the city of Kenai in particular, I, I do think that the city is positioned and should respond in the matter to, to, to try to correct what, what was, was really, in my opinion, and the opinion of almost everybody that testified when this action happened, that this was a wrong, a wrong way for the federal government to manage the fishery, to, to close something that has been open to, to fishing historically, pre-state. So this, this goes back a long time. There's a lot of history. And it closes half of the waters that the, that the fishery, that the drift fishery has access to. Forty-eight percent, I think, is what the fishing games analysis was. So it's a significant component. It would require some restructuring at the processor level. We have a major processor here in Kenai. So I, I encourage council to support the attorney's concept in pursuing this. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffner. Does anybody have any questions on Mr. Ruffner? Thank you, Robert.
Yeah, you, you bet. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm, I'm hearing, I see a lot of nodding of heads with what the outline that Mr. Bloom has proposed. So I don't think we need to take a, a roll call vote. We'll just have you move forward. Mr. Bloom, thank you for that. Next up, we have item G 11, which was added per the laydown, which is a work session, the subject work session to establish city council budget preparation goals and policies for the FY 2023 annual budget. This was brought forward by Mr., or from Mr. Eubank through the, Mr. Rose, Senator. So, Mr. Rose, Senator?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I'm actually gonna have Terry take the lead on this. But before he gets started, just so you know, this is a, this is a shift for the, the city, but, you know, Terry and I have been discussing this for about a week now, I suppose. And, you know, the more we discuss it, the more value we saw in this process. But to, to better describe it, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Eubank and, and let him bring you up to speed.
Mr. Eubank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, this is a bit of a switch in our, in our budgetary process. You know, typically, in my tenure here at the city, our, our budget process starts on the administration side with the city manager providing guidance to department heads in how he would like or expects to see their budget submittals. And, and, you know, those goals and priorities are dictated by diff, different financial constraints or different scenarios that may be happening within the city. This year, we'd like to, and then the department heads would then go forward, submit a budget, the administration would vet that budget out, we would present it to the council and draft. And then we would have, generally have a work session with council, where they would get to inquire with, with the administrate, with the city manager and the department heads about the budget, and we refine the budget, and we could then get adopted. Looking at this year, and, you know, the, the economic conditions that we are facing in the community, and for me, it's always striving to make our budget process better for the city and for its residents, and make it more open and more transparent. I wanted to take the step this year where those goals and priorities would be brought to council as a recommendation from the administration. They can be discussed, vetted, altered, changed. Council can interject their own priorities. The public can interject their own priorities through council. And then we would come back to council with a resolution that would formally adopt that budget guidance to the administration. Then, and this is all working in my mind, so I hope I'm communicating it well. Then the city manager would take that guidance document from council and lay out his plan to the department heads, and then we would move forward. What I envision in this process and the benefit of it is that it creates alignment, or we get the expectations from council and the public of what they would like to see in our budget at the end, rather than get to the end and have a document that doesn't meet the needs of council or, or the public and, and requires significant amendment. So it's just trying to, to bring that public, bring you folks, you, the council, into this process a little bit earlier. And, you know, this is an absolute best practice. It's, it's laid out in, in a lot of literature that I read. And so this was kind of my idea, and I appreciate city manager letting me bring this forward to you through him. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor Glendening?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yes, thank you for your, for your proposal. Would you agree that the insertion of the large volume of CARES dollars dislocated our, our decision-making and our budgeting? And I don't know if we're going to have this amount of money going forward, but I think what you want to do is, is establish more procedures for, for defining funding opportunities. Is, is, is that in a nutshell what you said?
Mr. Eubank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Glendening. No, really what I envision is, you know, what, what I'm looking at this year is, is all indications are at a national level. We're looking at inflationary pressures in this country that haven't been seen in 40 years, since the early 80s. Okay? And I would tell you that I remember the early 80s, but I was like 12. So, but, you know, inflationary pressure's north of 6%. There's going to be, there are going to be expectations from our employees. They're going to be, you know, we're already seeing the strain on some of our operating budgets, where the cost of the goods and services that we're buying are significantly more expensive. And, you know, I think it's imperative that we get with council and, and see what council's thoughts are on some of these specific topics, and how we approach them. Is, is council looking for?
where the cost of the goods and services that we're buying are significantly more expensive. And, you know, I think it's imperative that we get with council and, and see what council's thoughts are on some of these specific topics and how we approach them. Is, is council looking for us to not increase our expenditure budgets and, and try to hold the line, which could impact services or not? Or, or what do we, what does council think is appropriate when dealing with employees in, in situations where we have inflation and, and a labor market, frankly, that I haven't seen in my career? I haven't, I haven't seen signs on grocery stores offering $20 an hour in, in my lifetime. And so there are a lot of things moving right now and we just thought it was good to get everybody talking and, and get some, you know, all the thoughts headed in the same direction so that we didn't prepare something and spend a tremendous amount of time. Because we do spend a tremendous amount of time producing a budget document for council's ultimate approval. And, and we just want to make sure that we give you something that you're looking for.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
Yeah, thank you for, for offering that. Again, I, I go back to my old screed is that what we're looking at now is inflationary economy 101. We're going to, and we may have more than one work session. We may revisit this during the year. But you've put it in our mind and because of that, we are now responsible for it with you. And thank you.
Councilmember Basen?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I support the city manager and the finance director on this. I think it can only help to, to get this body's voice early because of the difficult situations they're going to be put in. So they might as well hear it early because if they're going to hear it late, there's no doubt about that.
Any further, Councilmember Petty?
Yes, I want to say that I appreciate this being moved forward and putting forth best practices so that we can put forth strategies and have priorities to make sure that we're making the most beneficial decisions moving forward to help our city and our citizens have viable opportunities going forth. So thank you.
Oh, Councilmember, or Mr. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I just wanted to mention that there is some time sensitivity here. Though we really only have time for one work session and then the resolution adopted there at that second meeting in January because we have to be able to provide this direction to department heads immediately thereafter so we can begin preparations. So I just wanted to make sure council was aware of that.
Yeah, in, in the memo, there's a request for a, a work session prior to January 10th, 2022. Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
Yeah, and, and your points well taken. My, my point is, is that what we forecast in January and February may not be true in July and August. And we may have to revisit this with another work session and adjust our budget. We just have to be prepared. This is something that I haven't seen since, I'll say I was 40 years old. So, thank you, Terry.
So I'm hearing affirmative on the work session. So I guess the next thing we should do is pull out our calendars and try to figure out what'd be a good day to accomplish that. And just, I guess I'll lead off by a salvo that I'll be not available from the 27th through the 4th. The 27th of December to the 4th of January. Although, what do we need for public notice if we were going to have it, if we're going to public notice it before Christmas, Miss Hines?
I need three days. So there's plenty of time to.
Yeah, that's right.
Did you want to do a work session before Christmas? Was that what you just?
I wasn't, I was just, I was covering all my bases and I was just to sort of, sort of, but no, but that would be my intention. My intention, to be honest with you, and looking at what our schedule is with, what we're going to be with our new clerk, might be like this, I know the, you can, or the K-PAD.
Yeah, that's on the 6th of January.
That's on, is it on the 6th or the 7th?
It's the 6th.
6th. So how about January 7th?
I'm out of town.
How about the 5th prior to our council meeting?
Yep.
How much time, Mr. Eubank, Mr. Ostrander? Time-wise, what do you want to carve out?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I, I think we should try to schedule this on a day that, that you don't have a council meeting, unless we want to start quite a bit earlier in the day. Because this is a new process and because we're really uncertain how much discussion there might be, I think we should slate a, a reasonable amount of time. And I, I think having it the same day as a council meeting might be problematic.
How about the 10th? 10th?
10th is great.
Okay. That's what I was going to ask. What, are we good with, Mr. Ostrander?
Thank, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I think in evening, typical, I, I would think start at 6:00 and I, I would not anticipate that it would go as long as our typical council meeting.
6:00 PM work? 5:00? I would prefer 5:00 too. Shelley? Oh, I haven't sworn in yet. So 5:00, I guess I'm hearing 5:00. Is that work with everybody? Okay. January 10th, 5:00 PM. All right. So next we move, everybody doing okay? Commission committee reports, council on aging?
No report on council on aging. Our next meeting's January 13th.
Airport commission?
The airport commission didn't hold a meeting. They didn't have a quorum. They just held a work session, talked about the land management plan. And gosh, I don't know when the next meeting is. Sometime in January. January 13th.
Thank you. Harbor commission?
Yes, there's no report and there will be a special meeting in January that has not yet been noticed.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation commission?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. On the calendar, it says the 6th. A question of the clerk, was there something on the, on the 4th with beautification, the joint meeting? Or am I, am I misremembering?
The joint meeting is on the 6th.
Also, of January.
There is not an also. It's their, their joint, it's one joint meeting, a joint special meeting.
Okay, I meant also both together. Yes, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
So Parks and Rec, okay. Just, I think there's a, is there, sorry, is there a skate with Santa? I, I know there's something coming up here. I just want to, maybe should announce it under Parks and Recreation. Anybody got a? The 18th? This Saturday? Okay. Davenspec, yeah, Davens, Davenspec Park, I think is the location, if I'm not mistaken this year. So it's always a, a fun event. So just wanted to get that out there. Planning and zoning commission?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Planning and zoning met on December 8th. On their agenda, they had unfinished business, the resolution to approve the, and adopt the Kenai Land Management Plan to, for recommendations to the council. They had, they, they needed more time. And so with that, they asked to do a work session. So they were going to get an option at this upcoming December 22nd meeting to schedule that work session, looking like it would be after the 1st of the year in January. So they will be scheduling a work session for the Kenai Land Management Plan. They approved resolution PZ 2021-41, which was granting a request for transfer of conditional use permit for the use of a hotel, guide and boat parking in the rural residential zone to Wild Kenai Adventures LLC. And then they also approved resolution PZ 2021-42, the granting a request, a transfer of conditional use permit for the use of a hotel in short-term recreational rentals in the rural residential zone to Wild Kenai Adventures LLC. And that was being transferred from High Low Charters, was that correct? High Low Charters. And they would make that amendment and the change in the name once this conditional use permits were approved and put forth. That was all the, they went over and we will be meeting this upcoming week on December 22nd here, Chambers, at 7:00.
Thank you. Beautification committee?
Beautification, beautification committee met last night and they wrapped up the Pumpkin Fall Festival with ideas of how to improve on it next year and how to make it bigger. And also talked about their 22 and 23 seed selections. Their next meeting is a joint session with Parks and Rec on January 6th.
Thank you. Mini-grants steering committee, there is no report. Unreported, the mayor, just want to, whatever I did, I, I didn't finally make it out deer hunting, which was more of a compressed trip, but it was still a wonderful time with folks that I got to go with. When I got back from that trip, there was a follow, follow-up to the C-Belt, which I think I explained to you, which is the, you know, sort of the rail belt communities. We got the C-Belt communities and we had our first C-Belt, yeah. Had our first Zoom meeting, which was attended and somewhat facilitated by the Argers of Alaska. There's three economic districts, one of them being our, our Mr. Dillon over at K-PAD, who was one of the facilitators of that, along with Mayor Castner and Homer and, and the mayor of Kodiak. And there was sort of a, a flash shop meeting sort of design or come up with priorities for the communities. There was a bunch, there was several topics that were discussed to, to flesh out those priorities. Some don't necessarily pertain to us in some ways, like the, the Marine Highway System, but is important to some of the other communities within that group. But we had participation from the northern sound area all the way down to southeast, a pretty good representation of, of the mayors of the coastal communities and city managers of Alaska. So stay tuned. I think this, you know, will just get better and better. We've got another meeting scheduled for January. With that, I'm going to, is this when we want to, okay. So we are going to swear in our new, will be our new city clerk, Ms. Sanner. So if you could please join me down here.
He's not missed an oath of office yet.
I, Michelle Sanner?
I'm Michelle Sanner.
Do solemnly swear affirm?
I do solemnly swear affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America?
The laws of the state of Alaska?
The laws of the state of Alaska.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Kenai?
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Kenai.
And that I will honestly, faithfully and impartially?
And that I will honestly, faithfully and impartially?
Perform the duties of city clerk?
Form the duties of city clerk?
Of the city of Kenai, Alaska?
Of the city of Kenai, Alaska.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability. So help me God.
Mayor, you're going to give her the flowers? Seeds all over.
Does she get to keep the pen?
No, that's Mayor Gabriel's pen.
And with that, we will move to administration reports. City manager, Mr. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So on December 7th, Vice Mayor Glenn Denning and I testified at the assembly meeting, representing the city council in support of ordinance 2021-40, which as you recall, is the ordinance that looked to expand the Borough's Planning Commission to assure that the city would always have a seat on that commission. In the end, the assembly passed the ordinance with all the components that the council supported. Those being, with one small change, actually. So it increased the planning commission, Borough Planning Commission, from 11 members to 14 members. It was originally anticipated there would be 13 members, but now it's 14, which the important component of that, of course, is we do have a designated seat and there will be no rotation. They also passed that the list that's provided by this council to the Borough Assembly for consideration is a list of at least one. So you don't need a list of more than one. And then the third part is that the city seats shall be filled by a resident of the city. So anybody who is representing the city on the Borough's Planning Commission has to be a resident of the city. There were two amendments that were considered by the assembly, both by Mayor Pierce and Assembly member Elam. One of them passed and one didn't. The first one that did not pass was, it would have put a restriction that this body would not have been able to forward a name to the Borough Planning Commission for consideration of either a mayor, a council member or a sitting planning and zoning commissioner. Felt that was more restrictive and that the council should have the, the ability to forward any name of a resident to the city that they want without those restrictions. So that did not pass. And then the second one is that the borough is, would be responsible for advertising and noticing of the vacancies. That amendment did pass. So that going forward, the borough will be advertising for any planning commission vacancies on the Borough Planning Commission. However, there was discussion about how that does not preclude the city from also advertising at the same time. So all in all, the ordinance passed as council hoped it would and, and we got the things that we needed. And then the second thing I have, and the last thing I have, is the bluff. So I did send out an email to council members today and, and hopefully were able to read that. But in big news, the governor's budget was released today. And there is $6.5 million in there for the city of Kenai for our bluff stabilization project. That brings our total match amount for that project to $10.5 million, which satisfies our match for a bluff project up to $30 million. So we're really close, if not there, on the amount that we need for matching dollars for that project. Huge thanks to Governor Dunleavy and his staff. And, and special thanks also to Jill Schaefer, who is, is the regional director down here. She contacted me on the 7th of December and said, hey, there's, there's discussions here in the governor's office. They're putting together the capital plan. Apparently they think that you have the necessary funding for this project and, and I don't think that's the case. And I said, it's absolutely not the case. And she said, well, can you draft me up something and, and so I can present it to the governor? And so I did. And she presented to the governor and then eight days later, we had it in his budget. So again, special thanks to her and, and her diligence and reaching out and, and asking for that information. The last component, of course, or the big component, we've got the match funding. We're still working as many angles as we possibly can to get the federal funding. I'm still very hopeful that, that that will happen. And with that, that's all I have, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions, city manager? Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, we had talked in, in, in past meetings about hiring staff of a, of professional grade. We talked about, like a building inspector and things like this. Gosh, we, HR director, you know, there's quite a list of, of folks. How, how, how are we progressing in this endeavor?
Mr. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Glenn Denning. And it's, it's, we've been really successful in some and others, we've really struggled. You know, we talked about the building official position and we actually had an individual come up last week and visit and go through a second interview. Mr. Curtin and I provided that interview to this gentleman. We have an additional candidate coming up in very early January to have another, to have, to have a second interview as well. So we have seen that that position has more promise now that we're going to finally get it filled. And trust me, Mr. Curtin really wants it filled because he doesn't want to do that, that second job. So that's one that we've, we've clearly struggled with. But, you know, if you look at the Parks and Rec director and the response that we got there, it was a completely different story. We just started recruitment for the HR director on Monday, so we'll see how that goes. So it's not an easy answer. It seems like in some cases, it, it's going well. And in some cases, we're really struggling. You know, the, overall, as, as an organization, recruitment is extraordinarily difficult right now. Our planning director has had an open position for his admin now for over three months and we've been unable to fill that. So we constantly look at that. We constantly look at whether or not we should be tweaking job descriptions or tweaking the pay of these individuals. Or are there ways that we can recruit better? Are there, are there avenues that we can use to get the message out? You know, we're always looking at those things. But again, it, it's been, it's been a struggle in some cases and in others, it seems to be going well.
Well, thank you for your illumination. I, I, I would think that, from what I'm hearing, that it's better to get the right one than just someone. And so appreciate you staying in there with it.
Any further questions? Councilmember Winger?
Thank you. Manager, Mr. Ostrander, just to follow up. So I did notice the job postings on the city's website. Just to follow up, so I did notice the job postings on the city's website, and the inspector position wasn't on that. Are we holding off to go through these interviews with the possibility of putting that back out? Or are we feeling confident with not putting that job back out?
Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Councilmember Winger. You're referring to the building official position? So the way that we handle our recruitment is we have an open recruitment period, and then it closes, and then once it closes, then we conduct interviews. So that position closed, we're now in conducting the interview process. You know, there has, there has been some discussion on whether or not we should consider changing. That's one way that we could change the way that we recruit. In other words, we recruit and keep it open until it's filled. It's much more efficient to do it that way. Depending on who you talk to, it's not necessarily a best practice to do it that way. So by doing it the way we do it, it's the most equitable process possible in that you have a period that it's open, and then it closes for everyone. Everyone has the same opportunity, and then we go through the interview process. If you have it open until filled, then those folks that apply earlier are going to have an advantage over someone who you might get two or three weeks later that maybe is preferable to the candidate you hire. So that's a really long answer to your question, which is, basically, it was closed. We're now in the interview process. If we don't fill it, we're going to have to open it again.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions, City Manager? Councilmember next, then.
Thank you. May not be something you're familiar with yet, but this morning, I think at 11 o'clock, the Bulling Alley Building was up for auction. And do we know if that was successful?
Mr. Ostrander.
I thought that was on the 21st.
Yeah, I think it's the 21st.
I think it's, I think it's the 21st.
Okay, thank you.
And I did notice some vehicles over there. I don't know if they're doing a walk-through or assessment of, Councilmember Basen.
Thank you, Mayor. So Paul, we had a, we had an email come through tonight dealing with snow removal from sidewalks. And I think the constituent was just asking us, you know what? And I know as well as anybody does that our, that our city department does a great job. Whenever we get hit hard, we can't get to all of them at one time. And I think what caught my eye along with that, just as we got that this morning, I see kids on the Kenai spur walking in the median because it's not plowed by the high school. And I guess I'm just looking for, you know, if you would, just look into it to see if we're prioritizing correctly where the heavy traffic areas are. And I'm sure we are, but just maybe reach out to your group and look at it.
Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, and Councilmember Basen. I actually did talk to Mr. Curtin about that after I received that email as well. And there's actually a snow removal policy that was updated last in 2017 that I will send out, or actually, Mr. Curtin could probably send it out to council members so you can see what is in there. And it talks only about the priorities for our roads. It does not talk about sidewalk priority. And I did talk to Mr. Curtin about that as well, and we should probably look to add that into there. But I'll have him send that out because it is a good document and explains kind of what our process is as far as clearing roads. In regards to the sidewalks on the spur highway, those are the responsibility of DOT. However, we do have a collaborative relationship with them in that if they can't get to it, and our crews have time, they will get to it. I know that Salatna does the same thing. But ultimately, it is a responsibility of DOT to clear those sidewalks. So if there were to be a change, and I think that the person who drafted the email brought up an excellent point. There are members of our community that don't drive or can't drive, and they need those sidewalks. It could be something that we look to work with the state to see if they could somehow prioritize that within the city so that we do have an opportunity for those residents to utilize them.
Vice Mayor Glendenin.
Yeah, just for, on my own recollection, do we not trade tasks with the, with the state? For example, we're not well set up to paint the median lines, and since we're out with our equipment, we can pick up the sidewalks. So I think just fine-tuning that understanding, I think we'll have a good solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, Councilmember Winger?
Thank you. One follow-up with James' bring-in mention of that email is a lot of our residents in the Birch Street neighborhood were really upset by the lack of snow removal. I believe some may have contacted administration on this. There was a lot of frustration with the lack of road maintenance through the entire neighborhood. I know after they got down there, there was still a couple of sections of the road that weren't cleared back. But now that we've cleared back, the fire hydrants are getting buried in. And so there's concern of, do the residents, are they responsible for clearing these? Or are firefighters going to go out and clear those? A lot of the residents are elderly residents with disabilities, and they would be unable to clear fire hydrants. And they were wanting some clarification on that, as well as we would also like to request for snow fencing put in at the airport, simply because we were barricaded, and that seems to happen once or twice a year. And that is a direct access for emergency responders into our area. They don't, they usually tend to take those back routes in and not take the highway route. So there was concern with the fire hydrants and as well as the blocking of the road. And we, as a neighborhood, would like to request snow fencing put in so that we don't have risk of barricaded inaccessible roads.
Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Councilmember Winger. We actually discussed snow fence last week when we had to close first, and it happens every year. But snow fencing does seem like it would be a relatively inexpensive way to at least alleviate that problem. So it is something that we're going to look into. As far as fire hydrants, we have a dedicated person in Parks and Rec that clears fire hydrants, but there's 500 fire hydrants, so it just takes that person a while to get to them. And in regards to the snow clearing, you know, I wish it would always snow on Mondays because then we could get to the roads on Monday and then clean up on Tuesday. In this case, we had a significant snow event on a Friday. We did get to all the roads on Friday for an initial run-through. But that initial run-through oftentimes leaves berms that really are difficult for people to navigate. And it's not because we don't try to eliminate them. You know, we've got gates on our, on our graders, but you know, it's a 16-foot board, and you've got a gate at the end that's 18 inches high. And when you're pushing six inches, it's just impossible to keep those out. But so we did clear everything on Friday, but then there was that Saturday, Sunday. We weren't able to get back onto it until early Monday morning. And the reason we manage it that way is because we have an overtime budget we need to manage. And if we work them Saturday, Sunday too often during the winter, that'll really drive that budget line item. If we consider the roads as unsafe or unpassable, we will work overtime. But if they're, if we get them to the point where we feel they're passable, we try to avoid that overtime if possible.
Thank you, and I just would like to thank administration for working on that and the police officers for working with our neighborhood to get out there promptly to shut that road down. As much as we don't like seeing it shut down, it was also a safety hazard for a lot. So we just really do appreciate the city getting out to be proactive on that.
Vice Mayor Glendenin.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. At the risk of appearing to pile on the Roads Department, the idea of the, of the little blade coming down by driveways is really, really useful. My phone rang for the first time in a couple of years, and it was mostly people that could not get into their driveways because they were plowed in with a berm. Probably as a matter of practice, if, you know, you go through and people can't get into their dwellings, probably should come back and clean it up. Most of these people are, you know, they don't have the four-wheel drives that I do. Maybe older cars and not the good tires, and they get high-centered on the berm trying to get in. And I'm not going to go into the specific situations. But if we could just, you know, maybe, maybe make an extra pass, or if there's a way we can hire a temporary worker to help us with that, that would be, that's in your bailiwick. Just suggestions, just thoughts, thank you.
Councilmember next, then.
Not making this up, by contrast, I got a phone call today from somebody that lives over in Portlock in that neighborhood, and they thought the maintenance was really good in their neighborhood. And it's like, okay, you know? They had a question more about a car that was in the road, but I think it had been tagged. And we were talking about process and stuff like that. But they initiated the, the maintenance was really pretty good. And so just pass that on. And snow fences do take up quite a bit of space, and a lot of First Avenue is owned by the, or leased by the Civil Air Patrol, and we do put a snow fence up there. And then there's the airport fence, too. Keeps it off the roadway mostly until you get a heck of a big wind, then you can't do anything. But anyway, I just wanted to pass that on, you know, that they, thank you.
Any further questions, City Manager? Seeing none, we'll turn to the City Attorney, Mr. Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Members of Council. I don't have anything to report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, City Attorney, Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Mr. Bloom, I just would like to say thank you. I know you've been working on some code enforcement things. It's been reflective in our neighborhood. Last week, to our surprise, the RV had moved away from the fire hydrant and left the neighborhood. And the neighborhood would just like to express their gratitude because you've worked diligently on really code enforcement through multiple properties in our neighborhood. And it's reflecting in the change of atmosphere. Things are cleaning up and getting better and giving more of an appeal of safe atmosphere for families again. So just want to say thank you for working on that.
Any other questions or comments for the City Attorney? Seeing none. Ms. Hines is up next, but I just want to take the opportunity to, you know, as I mentioned at the start of the meeting, this is her, this is her last meeting for us. When she announced that she was leaving, you know, we had a discussion. We thought about not accepting her resignation letter and then adjourning the meeting. So I don't know where that would have left us, any, some sort of legal. But I can tell you, I've really enjoyed working with you, Jamie, and it's been a pleasure. And I know, not only, I think the true testament of, you know, how you do is not necessarily what you think about someone, but what other people convey to you about that person. And honestly, everybody I've ever talked to here at City Hall has never said, I mean, they've always just said how nice it is to work with you and sorry to see you go. And, you know, so I know you'll find success wherever you go. Certainly, our loss is going to be somebody else's gain. I appreciated your efforts to try to make it work as best you could. And I'm going to miss you. I can't argue with the replacement, Shelley, I think it's going to be great, work out fine. I think we lucked out there. But with that, we did get you a little something here to go away, so I just want to give it to you this time.
It's a Tesla.
A Tesla.
So this is just for you to remember us, City of Kenai, this is just sort of fluff on there.
Oh, that's so cool.
Or it might be able to use that for ice fishing or something. What is it, Mayor? It's the City of Kenai, it's on a wood embossed, but it's engraved in with our boundaries and some of the streets and things like that. And I'm off the river there, something you can maybe hang in your dirtwood cabin.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So with that.
With that, thank you very much. I appreciate, I appreciate the gift, and I appreciate the kind words. It has been a great experience working here, and I've appreciated all of the support that I've gotten from the council, particularly in your support for me running for the Executive Board of the Alaska Association of Municipal Clerks. That was a great experience. And I also appreciate administration's support in helping and guiding me through sometimes some turbulent waters. And also the opportunities that the city provided to me for education. It's been a great run, and I'm proud of not only my accomplishments, but also the accomplishments that we've gained together as a team. So thank you very much for everything, and I couldn't be happier with your position with your next clerk because you're definitely in great hands. So thank you very much. But I can't end there because I did have one item of real business to talk about. In our, in your legislative budget, there's $500 budgeted for Capehead for their annual conference or their annual economic development meetings. And Mr. Dillon asked for $1,000 this year. And we had budgeted $1,000 for Industry Appreciation Days, which was canceled. So there are funds available in that legislative grant budget. And if there's a nod of heads, I will happily give them, I'll happily do the $1,000. I just wanted to, it's your budget, so I just wanted to make sure.
Right, so would we need any formal motion to do that?
I don't think you need a.
And I know in the past we have.
I mean, it's, it's, 500 is in the budget, there's unused funds in that budget. So it's, I just want to make sure that it's okay with you guys before I just go write the check.
That is our budget, so nod of heads. And just so everybody knows that Mr. Dillon did schedule that for the City of Kenai. So I know there's going to be a bunch of people that do come in here, so there is a return on investment. I guess you'd say, Councilmember Basen.
Mayor, if you would, just make sure the team realizes it's just a one-time event.
Vice Mayor Glendenin.
Thank you, Jamie. Well, you did a good job for us, and I appreciate it. And you generally met my request with good humor. But what I remember, oh, not most of all, but up in AML, some of the clerk parties that you pitched. And yeah, a good time was had by all. Yeah, I enjoyed them, and it was good networking and fond memories, and just thank you.
Any other questions, comments for the City Clerk? Seeing none, we'll move to additional public comment. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the council at this time?
Anybody on Zoom can unmute yourself or use the raise hand feature.
Seeing none, we'll move to council comments. Councilmember Petty.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say most excellent thank you to our city clerk and wish her the utmost best in her new adventures. I'd like to wish everyone a joyful Merry Christmas and a New Year and for the work that we did tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Sonar.
I would like to wish our clerk best wishes in your move and enjoy your new home. It sounds wonderful. And I'd like to wish Merry Christmas to everybody and a Happy New Year. And speaking of Merry Christmas, I was at the Kenai Middle School Choir Concert last night. And I'll have to admit, it was so nice to sit there and just be a recipient of all the beautiful music and not have one iota of responsibility there. But it was very delightful and very well done, and very well attended.
Very good, thank you. Vice Mayor Glendenin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, just, I can't embellish anymore upon the report that our city manager gave. But I would say that our request for having dedicated representation on the Planning Commission was met with, with, well, not universal enthusiasm, but the questions were well-founded, and at the end of the day, everybody understood the reason why first-class home rural cities should have designated seats and an accommodation was made for at-large seats in the borough. And I was well pleased with the process and the response that we got from Borough Administration and the Assembly. It's just Christmas time, and I know I have a little project, I always handwrite some cards. I'm in the middle of that, and trying to, trying to think elf thoughts other than Grinch thoughts. And I'm mostly successful. And just wish me luck in my endeavor and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Winger.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I'd also like to thank Jamie for all your dedication and work with the city, and I wish you the best in your next endeavors. I know how important it is to be there. I know how important it is to be there for your kids and you really, they're really committed to their skiing and I'm sure you're gonna really just enjoy, um, the change and being involved in that and get to watch the meets. And, um, I'd also like to thank our city employees and recognize the Shop with a Cop program. We heard about that at the last meeting. Um, they had, I mean, the participation in that program is just humbling what they do in our community. And I know there's a lot of effort within our community to provide Christmas for children. And, um, I, I just can't thank those individuals enough and just thank the police officers for getting together and hosting this, as well as Walmart as a sponsor. Um, we, we had the ordinance tonight on ATVs and off-road vehicles. And a lot of you may be, see through social media, there's a post circulating asking for the angel to be found. Two weeks ago, there was a student, um, a, a young kid that we coached on our wrestling team. Um, so we're, we have a little bit of fondness to this child. Two weeks ago, he was out riding a snow machine and got in an accident. And even through concussion, um, fractured, smashed skull, um, numerous broken bones, was able to, with a journal and come out of the middle of the woods there in Nikiski and stumble on a road where a pedestrian was able to, um, get the child and take him to the nearest fire station for help. The family would like, um, this person to be found so they can say thank you because their son thinks of him as an angel now and just says that an angel carried him. And I told them I would make this public plea, um, to either personally, publicly or privately for that individual to reach out just so the family can thank them. And then they would like us to just, um, by speaking about this, bring awareness to wearing helmets, approve safety helmets. And with Christmas break coming up, we're gonna have a lot of college students back. We're gonna have husbands like mine that get new toys that want to go play around and kids. So, um, they just would really like to bring attention that their son may not have been, been there had he not have been wearing a proper helmet. The helmet was smashed in. Um, it took definitely a, a lot of impact, but he's here today and they're very much, um, thankful for the fact that he was wearing a helmet. And would just like, um, me to encourage people to, um, wear proper fitting helmets. Kind of moving from that, uh, it's been a long year, um, for all of us. Uh, we've gone through a lot of initiatives as a city. Um, we've got, we've done land donations, programs, everything's been just super successful. Um, I'm looking forward to this upcoming year. Um, as I stated before, this is my busy time of the season. I am out of town more than I will be in town. Uh, my son had a swim meet last week. It's nice to see our school starting to resume some level of normalcy. So we will be out with sports quite a bit. Um, and to my benefit, they are allowing parent volunteers back in the school. So I get to volunteer in the schools again, which I'm very passionate about doing. And so I look forward to this next year and just all the changes we're seeing, um, getting back to normal and the business that will be coming forward. I've just liked to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Councilmember Basin.
Thank you, Jamie, for hanging out with us, keeping us out of trouble. I appreciate it. Shelly, look forward to working with you in the near future. Um, if you get a chance, Kenai Central High School's got their basketball tournament starting tomorrow for the next three days. Come out and support them. They have Kenai Cards floating all over the place. You've got a silent auction. They need your support just because the last year's been difficult raising money. So come out and support them. Uh, the hockey team last night played another great game against Ohio. It looks like they played to a tie. So it looks like they're being competitive everywhere we look. So Merry Christmas, everybody. Thank you for the public for coming out and enjoying and being with us. Cards, Cards, yes, please buy those Cards, Cards if you see them out there. You got a lot of athletes selling them.
That's a good deal. There's a, there's a good ROI there. Uh, Councilmember, Councilmember next then.
Thank you. Jamie, uh, you, you can rest assured, uh, that any, anything that happened at clerk parties stays at clerk parties. It's just up here. I've heard it being mentioned, but I don't know what they're talking about. But, uh, anyway, it's been, it's been wonderful working with you. Always. You've always been, you know, even keeled and professional and you've done a great job. And, and you helped me with this thing on a periodic basis, especially when I have to change the darn password and the, and the thing doesn't work. But anyway, you'll, you'll let, you'll let, uh, Shelly know how, you know, Henry comes by. I actually got that figured out that the same mistake comes up every, but anyway, every six months. So it, it works. But there's also other things. I couldn't get on the city website on this thing. So, and you offered to fix that. So I'm gonna take you up on that tonight before you leave because I know that Friday is your last day. So I'm gonna get a little bit, but anyway, very much appreciated everything. Thank you. Um, and, uh, on the, uh, the planning seats, um, I, I did write a personal letter, uh, to all of the Assembly members and did some phone calls. Um, but I, but I did Zoom, I watched the, the, uh, the, uh, the meeting. And I thought that Paul and Jim did an excellent job and that, that was, you know, the boots on the ground and kind of really where it was and, uh, did it, did an excellent job. And, uh, there's also a lot of other testimony from other cities and whatnot. But thank you guys for, for taking your time and doing that and it was successful for, for the city. And I just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a happy, happy New Year. See you next year.
Thank you. Yes. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Seeing no other business before this body, we are adjourned.